Mr. Clerk, we view caller roll.
Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Ready, I'm always ready to go.
Post One Alderwoman Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Post Two Alderwoman Alicia Miller-Blakely. District One Alderwoman Bernetta B. Lanier. District Two Alderman Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman Curtis Purtee.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Today is Thursday, June the 12th, 2025. The time is approximately 2:01 PM. We want to thank everyone for joining us, not only here in chambers, well, in our temporary chambers that will be vacating soon, President Moss, but also throughout our various social media networks and our award-winning SGTV. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all, and for us, all means all. Today, our invicta will be introduced by Third District Alderwoman Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I am so excited to introduce to my friend. So I want to read this so that I capture everything.
Shake it up.
Yes, it is, yes, it is, yes, it is. That's my alter ego, she keeps me out of jail too, y'all. So Dr. Bertis Berry received her PhD from Kent State University at the age of 26. She's taught sociology and statistics at Kent State. And so, here we are, right in front of you, listening to Dr. Berry's biography, and I can tell you that would take about three or four Google bytes, but she's written books, she's passed 100 books, articles. You're gonna let me finish this, Bertis, come on now, let me do this. And so, conflict resolution. So I wanted to be very personal with you. I met Bertis about 13 years ago, didn't even know she was in the midst. We were taking care of some business with Deborah Johnson with the upskirting, and she was able to help her. She didn't want to talk about this, but we have an upskirting law, and I know y'all are familiar with that because of that champion right there. So, her own rendition of herself, she says, "I am a socialist, an author, sociologist." She always corrected me. That ain't new, she's always, she's a sociologist. Gabe, y'all gonna give me a hand, y'all gonna help me? Ethan, yeah, okay. She's a sociologist, an author, a mother, a grandmother, a lecturer, a storyteller, and this is the best person that you could ever have on your side. She's active in her community and church where she is the postulant?
Deacon.
Okay, deacon. Ooh, that church. Okay, while we're all in a tailspin during the initial stages of COVID, Dr. Berry, she's always learning stuff and telling people to do better, she honed her skills in on sharing. She asked, "What do I do? What does my community need?" Which is how I found her, too. She updated her will in pretty figures, and I don't know what Bertis is going there, but she is just so amazing. I wanted you to hear her tell her own story. While initially, Dr. Berry has made these videos for five or six friends who are looking for inspiration, she continues to share everything about her with social media and platforms that continue to, at the same time, Dr. Berry honed her skills as a seamstress. Along with her family, they made over 30,000 masks. And I'm gonna take a page from our mayor, this is where you clap, 30,000 masks. The gift and joy, Dr. Berry is striving every moment of every day to be whatever and whenever and wherever God calls her to be. And I'm so profoundly grateful at this time to introduce her. May the Holy Spirit make it more that we can have the vision that she has. Dr. Berry is an awesome friend, my sounding board, my opportunity to do better and live in color. She is a real gift with a bright red bow, a real gift to this city. She uses her amazing self, as she said in a recent blog episode, "To always do better every day." I present to each of you my personal friend and our gift to Savannah. Dr. Bertis Berry, come on down. Thank you, Alderwoman Linda, thank you, Mayor Van Johnson. I would like to ask you all to take a seat, because I'm gonna use this opportunity to pray, to give us an opportunity to do what I call cleaning your filter. Every life has a filter, it's like the filter on the dryer, there's a note in the front that says, "Clean before each use." Whenever you engage in anything different, you should clean your filter. We come in with our own filter and understanding. You know, if you don't clean the filter of that dryer, your clothes will not get cleaned, they won't get dry, and you can literally set your own house on fire. And too often, we look at things through the lens of our own understanding without ever cleaning that filter. We all get things caught in our filter, my ex-husband got caught in mine, this is another story. So I'm gonna invite you to clean this filter to go inside, so get comfortable, remove anything out of your lap, put it somewhere, just allow yourself to kind of go into this meditation. Dr. Naim Akbar says, "We must ask ourselves on a daily basis, why me here now? What are my gifts being called for in this moment?" And Reverend Dr. Howard Thurman invited us to go inside of ourselves in search of the sound of the genuine. Yes, ma'am. He said, "If you do not find the sound of the genuine within you, you will always find yourself dancing on the ends of strings that somebody else is pulling." Come on. And so, we have to go inside. So I'm gonna invite you, if you're comfortable, to close your eyes, and every time I say it, I laugh, because my mother, whenever in church, they say, "Close your eyes in prayer," my mother would say, "Ah, ah, that's how you get your pocketbook took." So if you're comfortable closing your eyes, do so. And I'm gonna pray a prayer that was written by Dr. Bernice Reagan and sung by Sweet Honey and The Rock, and the prayer talks about allowing God to use our life as an instrument of our faith, that people will see who we are through our life. There's godlike, and warlike, and strong like only some show. And there are sadlike, madlike, and halflike, we know, but by my life be I spirit, and by my heart be I human, and by my eyes be I open, and by my hands be I whole. You loving ones, you are the chosen ones, but I hope you tell this story well, though you strive hard. Sometimes we fall prey to the lies the lazy, greedy people tell, but by your life be you spirit, and by your heart be you human, and by your eyes be you open, but by this Holy Spirit, move on the hearts of everyone here. Let this council and this mayor be a light for all citizens. Let that light shine so brightly on the citizens that we become a beacon to the state. Let that light shine so brightly in this state that we become the hope for the nation. Heal this nation, and let it be a balm to the rest of the world. We pray all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Baby, we love you. Love you.
Let us honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Deacon Berry, thank you so much for bringing your light to our meeting today.
Yes.
You've talked me off a couple of bridges yourself, so myself, but we are so glad that you were with us. Thank you, and good to see the White Brothers here as well, so good to see y'all. Thank you.
Ooh, Mr. Mayor, I'm just all off. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Are we ready, sir?
We are.
Our first item on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for June 12th, 2025.
Second.
Probably moved in a seconded that we adopt the regular meeting agenda for June the 12th, 2025. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion for the next two items on our agenda. Number two, make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on May 22nd, 2025 at 10:30 AM, and for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 22nd, 2025 at 2:00 PM.
Second.
And properly moved in a seconded that we approved the minutes of the work session and city manager's briefing held on May the 22nd, 2025 at 10:30 AM, and approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on May the 22nd, 2025 at 2:00 PM. You've heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, under item number four, the city council has been engaged in a multi-month, multi-session consideration of the performance of the three employees that work directly for council, the city manager Jay Melder, the city attorney Bates Lovett, and the city clerk Mark Massey. We have completed our process, and I would consider all three to be very good, and their requests have been placed before you, and so I will respectfully ask that we would adopt those at this time.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
They're second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, and with the council's thanks, and congratulations to Mr. Melder, to Mr. Lovett, Mr. Massey. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, note that it is unanimous.
Yeah, I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all so much. Oh, Dean. Yes.
We're only as good as the folks that work with us. All right. I have a proclamation recognizing the 250th birthday of the United States Army, Mr. Hoffman, Lieutenant Colonel, and anybody else who served in Army, y'all come on down. If anybody served in Army, y'all come on.
I was in ROTC.
Now, not the Army that lowered, the US United States Army, so we're all in that Army, so. Right. Any other Army folks around?
Oh, Mrs. Carter. Yes.
All right. Reasons follows, whereas on June the 14th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress representing the citizens of 13 American colonies authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And whereas the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the nation's new basic principles and values in the Constitution. And whereas for the past 250 years, the United States Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's wars. And whereas the motto of "This Will Defend" is the creed by which the American soldier lives and serves. And whereas no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of future conflicts, the nation can rely on the US Army to produce well-trained, well-led, and highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions entrusted to them. And whereas the components of the United States Army, to include the Army National Guard, the US Army Reserves, and the regular Army, has contributed immensely to the health and natural disaster response. And whereas, the city of Savannah is home to Hunter Army Airfield, hosting units from the 3rd Infantry Division, the 75th Ranger Regiment, and the 160th Special Operations Aviation Regiment. And may I add, the best dog-faced soldiers on the planet earth.
What you say, what you say.
Now therefore, I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Savannah, do hereby celebrate June 14th, 2025, as the 250th birthday of the United States Army, and express appreciation on behalf of the city of Savannah to the United States Army and the dedicated soldiers who have served in it over the last 250 years it has been in existence, and witness whereof I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Savannah to be affixed. Hurrah, sir.
Thank you very much.
Hurrah!
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens of Savannah, thank you on behalf of the United States Army, the 23,500 soldiers and 20,000 veterans living right here in coastal Georgia. It's my honor to accept this proclamation on their behalf. For two and a half centuries, the Army has stood ready, defending our nation, securing peace, and writing history through the courage of our soldiers. But none of these stories are possible without towns and cities all across America like Savannah. I've said it before, now I am on record that Savannah is the most military-friendly community in all of America. The mayor asked me to say that one more time to ensure the cameras captured it. Savannah is the most military-friendly community in all of America. Thank you very much for celebrating with us. Together, we honor the past today, but it's all about going into the future. Here's to another 250, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, thank you, the city of Savannah. On behalf of the Secretary of the Army, I want to tell you how much this means to get this proclamation, to make a point of the fact that we as an Army have been defending this nation for 250 years. And, you know, we depend on cities like this and communities like this to send their sons and daughters to us, so we can mold them into soldiers, so we can continue doing that for the follow-on years. But we also depend on you for a place for our families to live and to take care of them when we send the people in uniform down range, and you do that so well at Savannah. One last thing, you heard the mayor say, read in the proclamation, "Our theme this year is 'This Will Defend.'" What does that mean? What's this? This in front of us, the democracy that we have in this country, right here in this city, elected officials that speak for us and give of their own time to take care of us as citizens, that's what we do, and we've been defending that for 250 years, and I can tell you, the Army is gonna continue to defend that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have members of our team, a name, department, and when you served.
Alderwoman Alicia Miller-Blakely, I started in 1981, and y'all know the rest of the story.
Melissa Carter, Department of Management Services, I joined the Army in 1991 to 1995.
Anthony Caston, Water Resources Office, served in Army from 2000 to 2007.
Yay, Anthony!
Good afternoon, Lenny Gunther, your Chief of Police, US Army, I served from 1996 and ultimately ended in 2004.
Come on, gee.
Well, thank you so much, and may we continue to defend this. We appreciate it, and of course, Lieutenant Colonel, let our dog-faced soldiers know that we are Savannah Strong. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Dietrich, I want you to know he was in the NROTC.
Alderman, having a G.I. Joe toy does not work, does not work.
Yeah, I was in the War Waters Avenue.
Happy birthday, Army!
Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all, and for us, all means all. No matter who you are, what your address is, place of birth, ethnicity, or in this case, who you love, city of Savannah, whereas the city of Savannah is a vibrant, inclusive community that proudly values the dignity, worth, and contributions of every individual. And whereas June is nationally recognized as LGBTQ+ Pride Month, commemorating the 1969 Stonewall uprising in New York City, a pivotal event in the fight for LGBTQ+ rights in the United States and around the world. And whereas Pride Month serves as a time to honor the history, struggles, resilience, and achievements of the LGBTQ+ community while renewing our collective commitment to equity, acceptance, and justice for all. And whereas the city of Savannah has taken intentional steps to be a welcoming and affirming city for our LGBTQ+ residents, workers, students, and visitors alike, recognizing that our diversity is our strength. And whereas in 2020, the mayor's Proud Savannah Task Force was established to serve as a visible and vocal liaison between the city of Savannah and LGBTQ+ community, offering vital recommendations, fostering dialogue, and ensuring that city policies and practices reflect the values of inclusion and equity. And whereas the Proud Savannah Task Force continues to play a leading role in organizing community outreach, supporting LGBTQ+ affirming initiatives, and elevating the voices and concerns of Savannah's LGBTQ+ residents in partnership with city government. And whereas throughout the month of June, the city of Savannah stands united in celebration of the LGBTQ+ community, recognizing the progress that has been made while acknowledging the work that remains to ensure a world where everyone can live freely, safely, and authentically. Now therefore, I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the city of Savannah, do hereby proclaim the month of June, 2025, as Pride Month in the city of Savannah, and encourage all residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for LGBTQ rights and celebrate the many contributions of the LGBTQ community to our city's history, culture, and civic life. Let us reaffirm Savannah's commitment to equity, love, and belonging for every person, every family, every day. And witness whereof I have set my hand and cause the seal of Savannah to be fixed on the first day of June, 2025.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, who I am very lucky to call my friends. And so I've been here a few years, right? I've come up here to see you. I want to thank you, first of all, I'm getting old now, I have to wear glasses. Thank you so much for your recognition of June as Pride Month, but even more so for your ongoing support of Savannah's LGBTQ+ community. My name, of course, is Pam Miller, and I've been a gay activist in Savannah for over 30 years now. Currently, I'm the Acting Chair of Proud Savannah, the mayor's task force. I also facilitate a group for senior LGBTQ folks called Third Act. We call it Third Act because we're not done yet. It's a group to deal with people and dealing with the intersectionality of aging and being gay. On June 28th, 1969, when I was just a teenager, as a result of the raid on a gay bar in Greenwich Village, New York City, the Stonewall Rebellion became a pivotal event in the gay rights movement. Often considered the birthplace of gay rights, the ensuing activism brought about changes and awareness in both public perception and laws that recognize the intrinsic value in human life and that love is love. Right now, I'd say this world needs a little more of that. To honor that momentous occasion, Savannah Pride Center will host a one-day Stonewall event on June 28th at Starlin Yard. I am very proud to have been on the board over 26 years ago that formed the first Pride Festival here in Savannah. In those years, Pride has moved from an annual festival to today's Savannah Pride Center, a service organization which in addition to providing support to the LGBTQ+ community, offers the largest LGBTQ+ focused medical and mental health care in southeast Georgia. I have always been extremely pleased with the leadership of Savannah and your willingness to work with our community to make Savannah one of the most genuinely warm and welcoming places for gay people to live, which is why it's growing so much. There is always work to be done, however, and we're very pleased with the current initiatives underway between the city of Savannah, the city of Savannah Police Department, and the Savannah Pride Center. I've asked Jessica Saunders, Program Director for the Savannah Pride Center, to speak to you briefly about some of those initiatives.
Thank you, Pam, for your incredible advocacy and for helping to pave the way for community members like myself. It would be an understatement to say that we're living through difficult times. The world is wrought with division and oppression, violence, and fear. The enormity of pain and suffering is beyond overwhelming. It is in moments like this where we can find even the smallest glimmers of hope, and we remember that the pendulum of progress always inevitably swings back before it swings forward. One day, we won't have to fight so hard for peace, we won't have to scream to be heard, and we won't have to act to be seen. This is what Pride Month is about. It is visible support and community, it is permission to live authentically, it is a reminder that there are people that see you, accept you, and will stand with you through the chaos, it is life-saving outreach. There's a quote that originated during the AIDS crisis, "Bury your friends in the morning, protest in the afternoon, and dance all night. The dance is what keeps us going, the brief moments of freedom, community, and connection, finding joy in the midst of agony, it gives us something to hold on to. So hold on to your history, but don't let it keep you from changing the future. Hold on to your worth, but don't let it overshadow your neighbors, and hold on to those around you, because we need each other right now. Now is the time to build bridges, not walls, to stand together in our humanity and build the kind of world we want to live in, a world where differences are honored, not held over one another, where we can rest in the ways we are alike rather than bury ourselves in the ways that we're different." The LGBTQI+ population here in Savannah is one of the largest in the deep south and is growing every day. Even our support groups see people drive from over four hours away to find community here. The only queer-focused medical practice in Savannah has a 12-month waitlist. As harmful legislation and funding withdrawals are leading to a lack of physical and behavioral health care, we find ourselves needing to fill in the gap. Here at Savannah Pride Center, we're taking steps every day to build community connections, support programming, and a connection to care. We offer free and low-cost behavioral health services, gynecology, general checkups, HIV and STI testing, health and harm reduction, support groups, church services, job placement, educational workshops, resource directories, and social support programs. We provide safe space training to local organizations, businesses, the city of Savannah, and the Savannah Police Department, because our ultimate goal is really very simple. We want a community that is happy and healthy, and I think that's all anyone could ever really ask for. This proclamation is a symbol of progress, but there is still work to do. We are grateful that the city of Savannah is amplifying our community and the We are grateful that the City of Savannah is amplifying our community in this moment, and we're eager to continue the work towards a better Savannah for all who live and work here. Thank you all for your time today, and happy Pride.
I want to say that my name is K. L. Robert Hall, and I'd like to say that in July 8, 1988, Club One opened in the middle of the AIDS crisis. There was a few other bars like Club One, but we were the safe havens for the LGBTQ community. People didn't feel safe elsewhere. They couldn't have their funerals of their loved ones anywhere but places like the club or just not have it at all. And it's so wonderful to see this 40 years later, see this happening, and to see our community embraced and loved. And thank you. I was just saying, thank you.
Thank you, my friends. I appreciate that. Those are wonderful words to hear. There's nothing I can say that can top what each and every one of you have said already. All I know is I came to Savannah 20 years ago, and 20 years ago seems like yesterday. And this city, the people in this city, my workers, my colleagues, my friends, and still some of those lifelong friendships, embrace me with open arms. And when I ran for office, people told me, "You'll never do it in the deep south. You'll never, you'll never make it. You're a gay man in the deep south, and you'll never get elected." And it's just the way things are. And I heard that comment over and over and over again. And here I am today, serving my second term on City Council in Savannah, proving that there is hope, there is light, there's welcomeness from others here in this city. Yes, that's right. We have a lot more work to do, and we're going to do that work. And this council, this community, this administration, the city employees, Team Savannah, we are all committed to doing that work, because as the mayor says, "In the City of Savannah, all means all." Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to monthly events, but most importantly, we see you and we love you.
And we love you back. And if God's willing, I'll be back again next year.
Turn this way real quick, Pam.
She can't just send you her picture?
No. I got news at five.
Thank you. And to the heartbeat of Savannah, Mr. City Manager, and I'm giving that name the Heartbeat of Savannah, our Waste and Recycling Team members. City of Savannah, whereas the nation celebrates the week of June 16 as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control, the eradication of many diseases in the western world is due in large part to higher public sanitation standards resulting from effective garbage disposal. And whereas the men and women employed by the City Refuge Collection Department and hauling industry in the community make significant contributions to the safety, health, and welfare of citizens. And whereas the proper collection and disposal of waste and recyclables is vital to preventing disease, litter, and dump heaps. And whereas refuse haulers contribute to a tidy and clean community. And whereas the City of Savannah values and celebrates the hard-working men and women in our residential refuse, refuse disposal, commercial refuse, recycling, and litter, and street cleaning divisions in our sanitation department, and all others employed in the sanitation industry to serve residents and local businesses. And therefore, I, Van R. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Savannah, do hereby proclaim the week of June 16 through the 20th is Waste and Recycling Workers Week in Savannah, Georgia, and encourage all citizens and local businesses to participate in opportunities to thank the men and women in the sanitation industry. And when this whereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Savannah to be affixed. Ladies and gentlemen, the heartbeat of our community lies within the individuals before us, which is why I make no excuse, and hopefully you don't either, in making sure that they're compensated well and making sure they're treated well, and which is why we don't make distinctions between classes of employees. We know that police officers run toward crime. We know that firefighters run into buildings, but let your trash not be picked up over a couple of weeks. And these become the most important people in the world. You don't want your trash, but yet they pick up the stuff that you don't want. And it ain't always in a tidy bag. You can learn a lot about people from the trash they got. And so these are the secret keepers that know how nasty some people in our community are. But most importantly... Y'all should write a book about it, right? Just leave my address alone. But these are the individuals, day in, day out. Many of us remember during COVID. We know during snow, during hurricanes, these folks are out there every day doing the work. These are also frontline employees. These are the ones that are going to individuals' homes, to our seniors, pulling out their trash, checking on them. And these are the individuals that help put a smile on the face and a clean on our streets. And so this is a small token as we celebrate them and their colleagues around the country. We know that we have the best team in the land. So congratulations, and we're so proud of you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, staff, and all in attendance. My name is Q. Hunter Andrews. I go by Q, and I'm the Senior Director of Solid Waste for the City of Savannah. It's an honor to be here today to recognize and celebrate a team of solid waste professionals who are often overlooked but whose impact is immeasurable. They are unsung heroes who rise each day before the sun and face demanding physical labor, harsh weather conditions, and the constant pressure to ensure our communities stay safe, clean, and environmentally sustainable. These individuals perform an essential service that affects every one of us, yet their work is often taken for granted. So today, we shine a light on their invaluable contributions from trash collection to proper waste disposal at our landfills, to sweeping our streets, to recycling, staying green, and to litter abatement. These are the solid waste professionals that ensure our communities are clean and thrive for future generations. Your efforts make a difference as you are not just solid waste professionals, but also guardians of our environment, and we are truly grateful for all that you do. As we honor these professionals today, let's also take a moment to reflect on our own responsibilities. It's easy to forget that we all have a part to play in solid waste management, but by properly utilizing the current system in place, we can make their jobs a little easier and our communities a lot cleaner. Once again, thank you to every solid waste professional. Your dedication, hard work, and passion make our community stronger. You inspire us to think more carefully about how we efficiently and effectively manage solid waste within the City of Savannah. And I'll close by saying, let's continue to work together to build a cleaner, healthier, and more sustainable environment for all. Who are we? And how do we serve? And heart as well. Thank you. Since we don't get these opportunities very often, I would like for... Oh, I was gonna... No, I was just gonna have them introduce themselves.
Thank you. I just want to echo my thanks to the entire team and the solid waste professionals. And it's a shame that they're unsung because of the backbone, really, of our organization, and they're up before everybody. They stay out later than most, and they literally come to your house. They literally come to your house. And when I first got to town, first took this job, I stayed at a place, my bedroom window was right above a commercial garbage dumpster that was managed by the city, and they'd come by every morning at 5:00 a.m. And most people would think, well, that's a burden, but it reminded me every morning when I heard that truck coming, that the city was working, the city was breathing, and we're doing our business. And it made me feel good every day to wake up to the sound of the city at work and our hard professionals doing the work that we ask them to do every day. So it's with pride that we're here celebrating you guys. Y'all are really the backbone and the heartbeat of our organization and can't thank you enough. Thank you, Q. Well done.
We want to know your name, your title, and how long you've been with the city?
Fundymason, Interim Director, Commercial Refuge, Recycling, and Litter Services, and I've been a public servant for 18 years.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carlos Bates. I am the Project Manager, and I've been with the City of Savannah about 26 years.
Hello, Leah Scott Perry, Educational Director and also Executive Director of Keep Savannah Beautiful.
Afternoon, Van R. John Denny, Director of the Residential Refuge Collection Division, and I've been here about 32 years.
Hello, I'm Teresa Lee. I've been here five years, and I am a solid waste supervisor.
Hello, my name is Victor Carson. I'm a solid waste senior worker. I've been here for four years.
Hello, everyone. Ronald Hayman. Been here two years, and I'm a street sweeper.
Hello, everyone. I'm Anthony Moore. I'm a heavy equipment operator, been with the City of Savannah for two years.
Hi, everybody. My name's Eduardo Rosari. I'm an ATL, Heavy Equipment Operator. I drive the boom truck. Best job ever.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jacqueline Smith. Been with the city 23 years and a solid waste senior worker.
I'm Charles Spalding. I am a maintenance worker, and I've been with the city for 17 years.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mason Clark. I'm the manager at landfill, and I've been with the city 11 years.
Hello, my name is Deena Davis. I'm a solid waste senior worker. I've been with the city three years and three months, and I'm a team player for the city because I was hired at litter, but I also help out on recycle routes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brad Mole. I'm the Planning and Support Manager, and I've been with the city for 10 months.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is William Slater. I'm a solid waste supervisor almost a year.
Gene Privat, Chief of Government Operations, 43 years.
So thank you all so much. Again, we're so, not only incredibly proud of you, but incredibly grateful to you for the work you do and to all of our citizens. This is their week, so when you see them, tell them thank you. You know, slip them something to eat or something. I'm sure they won't say no. That's right. Please tie those trash bags up really, really good, and don't be nasty, okay? Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Come on in the circle. Oh, Mr. Mayor, you gotta go take the picture.
Y'all make us proud. Thank you. Thank y'all. Good to see you. Thank you so much. Thank you. They ain't gonna be able to see us.
All right, everybody ready? One. All right, one, two. One, two, three.
Sanitation.
Sanitation!
Hold the pose, hold the pose. Say it again, please. All right, everybody ready? One, two, three.
Sanitation!
Who are we?
Sanitation!
All right. Thank you all so much. Let us go ahead and move through this agenda. We have alcohol license hearings on number eight through 12. If you would note, the number 12 has been withdrawn by the petitioner.
Yes, sir.
So that is not on the agenda. So we're now talking about eight through 11. Are there any pull-offs before we move forward? Okay? Item number eight is approval of a Class E beer and wine by the Package Alcohol License to Charag Kumara Patel for Savannah Mart, a convenience store in Alderman District 3. Item number nine is a Class E beer and wine by the Package Alcohol License to Devindarabi Patel for Corner Stop at 2314 Skidaway Road. Item number 10 is approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink with Sunday sales to Lindsey Porcel for Jim and Nick's Barbecue in Alderman District 4. And item number 11, a Class E beer and wine by the Package Alcohol License to Yadameer Patino for Mia's Latin Supermarket at 103 East Montgomery Crossroads, a supermarket in Alderman District 4. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Does anyone have anything to say against any of these licenses, except for Jim and Nick's? Anybody? Going once? Going twice? Speak now if ever hold out for peace.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to close the hearing.
Properly move to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passed as item number eight, a Class E for Savannah Mart, Alderman Walden Bryant.
Sir, I make a motion that we approve the Class E beer and wine by the Package Alcohol License to Sharique Kumar Patel for Savannah Mart, a convenience store. Establishment is located at 2810 Skidaway Road between Roland Avenue and Shell Road. The establishment is located at 2810 Skidaway Road between Roland Avenue and Shell Road in Aldamatic District 3. Do we have the...
You're second?
Second.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. What's wrong?
I wanted to make sure we have the agreement and that we forward it to the clerk, so that's on notice. Ms. Jones, you have the completed agreement? Okay, thank you so much.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, Corner Stop, 2314 Skidaway Road, Alderwoman Wilder-Bryan.
Mr. Mayor and council, I request the approval of a Class E beer and wine, Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Davin Drawhi Patel for Corner Stop at 2314 Skidaway Road, a convenience store. The establishment is located between 39th and East 40th Street in the 3rd, the Monty 3rd District. Do we have the agreement for that one, too? Thank you so much, sir.
You're second?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, Class C liquor beer and wine for Jim and Nick's Restaurant, 7822 Abiquon Street, Alderman Palumbo.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Move for the approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink with Sunday sales to Lindy Porcel for Jim and Nick's Barbecue.
Second that. I don't know about this one. I heard they're opening next week, right? Next week? Next Wednesday? Wednesday. I'll be there. I'll be there, too. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We're tired of it being cooler and cooler.
Item number 11, this is a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license for Mia's Supermarket in Aldamatic District 4.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Move for the approval of Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Yadamar Patino for Mia's Latin Supermarket.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Y'all go be great.
Yeah.
All right. We now have a public hearing. As you know, city staff has been regularly engaged in seeking extensive and exhaustive public input on the Savannah GPS strategic plan. Mr. Manager, if you want, if you would like to give us a top-level review. That's not it.
We'll load the slides, but it's nothing that council or the public has not seen before. We provided a workshop at our last council meeting with the proposed draft objectives and strategy language for Savannah GPS. There's a strategic plan that was following months and months of public engagement with our community. Thank you so much with our community, with our businesses, with our stakeholders, and with you, and with our employees. So really, I want to draw attention to kind of the levels of the strategic plan and make sure that we're all kind of understanding what the language in the plan that's will be before council in two weeks. Council has already set the mission, the vision, the values, and the six goals for our city. The strategic plan language is really focused on this green level, the objectives and strategies, which kind of, that next layer speaking to how we might achieve or advance those strategic goals and how we'll do it using the values of council. And the initiatives and activities, those are going to be the actual work plan. That's done every year in the budget. And with the strategic plan, we'll see in the next budget how our initiative and strategies that we're funding through the budget are connected to the objectives and strategies in our work plan and have key metrics that are going to measure our success. You've seen this, of course, our timeline. We are here in the spring of 2025. Feels a lot like summer, but still technically spring, I think, to present for city council adoption. Of course, the big work is the implementation and evaluation that happens ongoing after we adopt the plan. We know that we had nearly 300 in-person attendees to our specific Savannah GPS meetings, but we've been talking about the strategic plan at every community meeting we've gone to, including the latest last night in District 3. We've seen over 1,500 comments to our survey. The next slides are available for the public at savannahga.gov backslash GPS, and they're in front of you, I know, but these are the draft objectives and strategies, the objectives in bold, the strategies for those objectives underneath all of them, and they correspond with the six goals that city council set nearly a year and a half ago. So we're holding. I'll go to where we are in terms of how we might finish this process up. There's a few more opportunities for you and for the public to provide input on the plan. We're today, the first public hearing, June 12. We have an online public comment period that has been open for two weeks and will continue to be open for another week until the close of business next Friday, June 20. Again, please visit savannahga.gov slash GPS. We will be discussing the plan at Savannah at Night, which is our biannual town hall on Wednesday, June 25 at 6:00 p.m. Location is still being finalized. We hope it'll be on the South Side for this meeting. And then the second public hearing and hopefully consideration and adoption by council at our next city council meeting on June 26 at 2:00 p.m. And so that's my presentation. Want to really give a big thanks to Team Savannah, especially Daphne Williams, our chief of staff, for the great work that she's done leading this project and leading the community engagement effort.
Thank you, sir. Again, we want to make sure that we are over gratuitous in our opportunities for people to weigh in on this plan. This plan has already started to infiltrate its way into our DNA. It's given from our SPOSS list and things. I think council's direction that we've received from our community has been quite clear and really quite consistent throughout our districts and stakeholders in the city. So if there's anyone has anything to offer regarding the draft 2024 Savannah GPS strategic plan, this public hearing is now open on that, and you have the opportunity to do so. Going once? Going twice?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move we close the hearing.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, and we'll hope we'll have another opportunity over the coming days. Thank you. Under zoning hearings, a petition of Andrea Cannella on behalf of Midtown Savannah Property Investments LLC for a special use permit to permit accessory alcohol sales in association with a restaurant in 1722 Habersham Street in Aldamatic District 2. I guess Jay Melder is presenting today?
Just getting it ready for Mr. Moore.
Okay. Though we had a guest presenter.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council.
How you doing, Mr. Morrow?
Nice to see you all. Thank you so much. So very briefly, this is a request to establish accessory alcohol sales in association with a restaurant at 1722 Habersham. On your screen, you'll see that this was, actually, it's a full block parcel simply because this was a whole-scale redevelopment here. Adjoining Price Street, there's an office. You can see some residences in the middle. And adjoining Habersham Street, there is an apartment building that happens to have one commercial tenant down in the corner, and that's the particular suite that we're talking about today. There is a restaurant that is currently located there, and actually, there was one there previously. Just to look at the future land use map, we are a traditional commercial and traditional neighborhood on this block. And so what that indicates to us is that this is a mixing of residential and commercial uses in kind of that traditional development pattern. Also, you can see that the zoning is TC1 or Traditional Commercial 1. Catacorner from this is Cotton and Rye, and if you look to the north, that is where tacos and tequilas would be located, just to give you some orientation. If we look here, we can see that this is the suite that's located there at the corner of Habersham and East 34th Street. And on the right, there's an image, and it's actually in that location presently. Just to look at the standards here, you can see that retail consumption for on-premises consumption of alcohol requires a special use permit, and so that is the purpose of today's hearing. There was a previous request here that went to the zoning board of appeals that was approved back in 2018. This is a new user, and so they are requesting similar treatment. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything to say regarding this petition? Going once?
Mr. Mayor.
Going...
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Going twice? Speak now if ever hold thy peace.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I ask that we close the hearing.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A motion passes. Your council have anything regarding this item? What is your...
Your pleasure.
Right, right. So what is your pleasure regarding this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I make the motion that with the approval of the neighborhood, we make the motion to accept the permit for the accessory alcohol sales with association of restaurant at 1722 Habersham Street.
Second.
Properly moved to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 15 is a petition, annex, less than 159.7 acres, located 605 Old River Road and Sand Hill Road from Chatham County to the City of Savannah. This is a second reading, so we've already had a hearing about this. I do have one request for comment, but I believe, Mr. Kurtz, you spoke at the first hearing, so you're already a part of the record. So you, okay, so you know that, okay. So is there any other comments from anyone who has not spoken regarding this on the public record? Going once?
Mr. Mayor.
Going, one moment. Going twice? Mayor, pro tem.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not prolong this...
One moment then.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else for the public hearing? Their motion to close.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mayor, pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to item number 15, 16, and 17, I just want to make, ask the city manager to assist me here, and also, I need to reach out to just one of our professionals in engineering, Mr. Jimmy Collins of Thomason Hutton in just a second. But what I want to state to the public as we continue to move forward in the growth of the City of Savannah, now, I represent the 5th district, and a lot of what is happening with growth in the City of Savannah is happening in the 5th district due to the fact that that is where the land for development is. And a lot of the land is in Chatham County. But it's a wonderful thing that's happening in our city, and I asked the mayor if I could just take this moment just to let the citizens know that the mayor, the council, and the city manager, our attorney, our clerk, and Team Savannah, we care. We care about development. We care about different types of land that we have to develop on. Now, I've done some soul searching with all of this, and I sort of call myself a semi-guru when it comes to zoning issues on city council. And with this, I'm telling you, and I just asked the mayor for this, I just want you all to know that it is being taken to heart. Your telephone calls, your research for years, all of the work that you do as professionals in waste, in wetlands, our Ogeechi River keepers, our waterway keepers, all of you, we are not taking you for granted. We hear you. So with this, I have gone deep into our ordinances to find out... What are you asking me, what are you asking us for? Are you listening to us? Yes, we are. Mr. City Manager, in reference to these items on the agenda, 15, 16, and 17, at 605 Old River Road and Sand Hill Road, in reference to how does our development standards with our stormwater and wetlands can be impacted? But, City Manager, if you don't mind, you can answer if you want to, or I can have Mr. Collins come forward, or you can give a comment first. After City Manager, comment on this because we've been, I've been sitting with our city manager for some days and hours. I have not slept on this since we left here the last time. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could make the comments in reference to our conversations, and Mr. Collins, you get ready next.
Well, certainly, Mr. Collins is expert in engineering and will be able to talk more to that, and so could to your city staff engineers as well. The City of Savannah has some robust design standards and regulations around building in wetlands and the stormwater and the drainage systems that have to be improved in order for that development to happen. Earlier this year, within the last 12 months, city council also voted to raise the limit to two feet above the floodplain for all development, not just those that would be impacted by HUD loans. So already, the city is providing a lot of protection for our wetlands, and we have a lot of wetlands in Savannah and in the region, and we build on wetlands. We have built on wetlands. It's how our design standards keep pace with what we know is happening in our environment to be able to make sure that we're building the infrastructure that will keep our communities resilient. And so we have those robust regulations in place, and I think that you could speak to engineers to talk exactly how specifically this development will have to comply with those regulations and what that means for the specific parcel.
Okay. And keeping everything across the board, the mayor just reminded me that we've got to do, if we do for one, we've got to do it for all. So, Mr. Collins, he did speak at our last meeting. I just wanted him to do a little bit more of technical statements in reference to our flood damage prevention ordinance. But the mayor is kind of directing since he talked.
I think if you wanted to, I don't want to put Mr. Morrow on the spot, but he's looked at this petition a long time for MPC and can talk a little bit about what this petition would have to do in terms of its adherence to City of Savannah designs and codes. I think that might be more appropriate than someone from the public.
And also, and also, I was thinking about our expert in our Team Savannah.
Yes, well, we have our director of stormwater management, Mr. Zach Hoffman. And I'm not sure that Zach's in the room. He's probably out working on a stormwater project, but we'll find somebody. Is Zach here? Ron's here, and Ron can speak to it.
There you go. That's our guy.
Yeah, could you speak to it, Ed? Thanks.
He'll do the same thing.
Thank you so much. I would just state, this is a petition that we did spend a great deal of time figuring out. How do we situate it so that once these site plans begin to come back, we get the opportunity to look at each and every one and kind of attach appropriate standards that, in addition to those that the city has adopted, which are very robust relatively speaking, but also to apply greater understanding, specifically with regard to kind of our coastal context in the stormwater management. So specifically, I'd like to state that there was a condition that was attached to these requests to state that the MPC would get to look at each of those specific development plans once they are submitted. These are plans that ordinarily would not come back to the MPC, but the benefit of that is that this would give us the opportunity to kind of conference these plans with both city engineers and county engineers to make sure that there's concurrence and that everyone is satisfied that the development standards are met. Mr. Melder is speaking to what I would say, the stormwater ordinance and the floodplain ordinance together. The idea is that as you are developing, these combined standards are meant to ensure that flood levels are not permitted to increase regardless of the nature of development. regardless of the nature of development that's happening around. So there are no rise provisions in addition to those that state that new structures have to be built at a certain level above the base flood elevation. And so essentially, the idea here is really, anybody who is already there is not going to be made worse off, and there must be concurrence on this particular development amongst city and county engineers that these standards are going to be met before permits are issued, so.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Mr. Morrow. That's sort of what Mr. Collins was going to be talking about.
Okay.
So right on the head. Thank you, City Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
City Manager?
Would you like Mr. Feldner to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if I could have Mr. Ron Feldner come up. Ron is our chief of water resources and also PE and stormwater falls under his purview.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Feldner, thank you so much for coming forward. The overshadowing of our residents and those who will become city of Savannah residents during annexation, annexation is going to take place because of the growth that's happening, especially in the west side of Savannah. Can you speak to just what our care for our residents when it comes to flooding, when it comes to our flood damage prevention, and how our policies, how our policies keep them safe and knowing that we think about them, care about them, as we and you as a city employee having to be a part of the team, making sure that our contractors, our engineers who we contract, are making sure that when petitioners come and want to invest in our city, that they are following all standards and policies of the city of Savannah when it comes to flooding, flooding and flood prevention.
Okay. The ordinances that the city has on the books has been talked about, very comprehensive regarding stormwater management, stormwater runoff, but also floodplain management. And those reviews are done within our Development Services Department in a coordinated fashion. So as you're looking at all the different aspects of land development review and permitting, that is done in a coordinated manner so that we have a real good understanding as to how those different ordinances and the particular project that's under review need to be processed through the system so that things are not missed. And I think the Development Services staff does an excellent job of coordinating internally from all the different departments that have to provide information, including stormwater management and water resources, as well as their own in-house or interdepartment floodplain management experts. Tom McDonald comes to mind. Something else that has been going on recently out on the west side is there's been a collaborative effort between the Chatham County Engineering Department and Development Services and Stormwater Management Staff at the city. And they are working together in the interest of all citizens on the west side, both county and city, and county maybe transitioning to city, to make sure that that collaborative effort to best understand the impacts of these projects coming online and changing the land use and the impervious coverage is managed in the most effective way. So I think that collaboration is going to be a key part to any aspect of the west side to ensure that that input and representation from both the city and the very thorough and robust program we have is also then evaluated and coordinated with our counterparts in the county engineering office so that a consensus can be reached on what constitutes the appropriate watershed stormwater management strategy for the west side.
Yes. Thank you so much. Watershed, you hit it right on the head. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to prolong this any longer. I knew you were going to start on me because I get excited when I start talking about these subjects. The word collaboration is key. So, citizens, continue calling me. Let's continue to meet. Neighborhood, the west side neighborhoods, let's continue to meet. Make me aware, keep me aware, so I can do the work that I've been doing, especially so intensive, especially on this project.
All the women?
Item number 15. I would like to make a motion for the approval of the, to annex, 100 and, yeah, annexation first. I'm going to go through each one of them. To make a motion to petition to annex 159.7 acres located at 609 Old River Road and Sand Hill Road from Chatham County to the city of Savannah.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded that the petition to annex 159.7 acres located at 605 Old River Road and Sand Hill Road be approved all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion passes eight to one. Just for the purposes of Mr. Kurtz and our friend Jim, I did not, I want, Mr. Collins, I want to make sure, I didn't let you all speak because you all spoke in the last record. So since you're already a part of the public record, that is why, and I want to make sure, if you can do it, you can do it. So I just hope you understand that. All right. Item number 16 is a petition, Harold Yellen on behalf of Farino Company LLP to amend the future land use map for residential suburban single-family to plan development for 159.7 acres at 605 Old River Road and Sand Hill Road to support annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to this item as it is written on the agenda.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion passes eight to one. Thank you very much. Item number 17, petition of Harold Yellen on behalf of Farino Co. LLP to amend the zoning map from RA Residential Agriculture Chatham County and PRC Protected River Corridor, Chatham County to PD Plan Development City for 159.7 acres at 605 Old River Road and Sand Hill Road to support annexation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to this item as it is written on our agenda.
Second.
And probably move and seconded all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion passes eight to one. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
All right, so item number 18 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 1 Personal Conduct of Part 9 Offenses of the Code of the City of Savannah, Georgia to regulate urban camping and improper use of public places and to repeal our ordinances in conflict herewith and for other purposes. In this case as well, we also had a public hearing, and some folks spoke, and I'm trusting, Mr. Clerk, you have not repeated anyone. Huh? Okay, if you would indicate for me. Okay, this, okay. Thank you, I appreciate, that's what I was going to ask you for. All right, so I'm going to go through this, and the rules are very clear. You have two minutes in which to speak. You get to introduce yourself for free, and then after you introduce yourself, then that is when, in order, which I call you. Pastor, thank you. You get an opportunity, there's those two minutes, and then at two minutes, I'll give you the opportunity to literally finish your thought, and then I'm going to have to tell you your time is up. All right, we want to make sure we're being fair. So I have them, and this is in no particular order. Jen DeLong? Is it Kristy Krill? I pronounced it right? Okay. Is it Calvin Crampton? Did I pronounce it right? Calvin, okay, yeah, I don't want to mispronounce anybody's name, so we'll start with those, and then we'll go through the rest of them. You have two minutes from that time, so, Mr. Long.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name's Jen DeLong. I'm the chief executive officer of Chatham Savannah Authority for the Homeless, and I wanted to offer a few thoughts around the urban camping ordinance that you all are considering right now. We run street outreach for the city of Savannah as well as Chatham County. We have 10 full-time staff members that participate in that activity every single day, with the exception of Sundays, and they work until nine o'clock at night. So I'd like to offer two different perspectives of encampment environments that we engage in every single day here in the city of Savannah. Some encampment environments are about care and shared resources, some, but not all. Some encampment environments in our community are about command and control and predatory behavior for people that are extremely vulnerable. And so what I mean by that is sometimes in encampment environments, people with severe mental illness, people struggling with severe substance use disorder, people with disabling conditions, senior citizens, extremely young individuals will be in an encampment environment, and they become prey to extremely predatory behavior just to maintain their safety. And so it's those two environments that we grapple with in the unhoused space in our community. Not all environments are about care and compassion and shared resources. Some environments are, and not all environments are about command and control and predatory behavior, but some environments are. We get frequent calls from citizens in our community who are struggling with the behaviors of ruthless folks. And one example is this. We recently received a call from an individual that lives downtown. It was a senior citizen. His care provider was trying to help him get back into his home by using a private entrance that's connected to an alleyway. In that alleyway, there were two individuals sleeping outside of that private entrance to his home. He's 87 years old. He couldn't get into the private entrance, and he had mobility issues. So the police had to be called. That's an unfortunate circumstance. It's tragic, in fact, but it does happen in our community. And so I just wanted to share those two different perspectives that in urban camping areas, that those two things do exist and they coexist in our community, and they're very challenging.
Thank you very much.
Kristy, introduce the rest of the people.
Sure.
Are they all going to speak?
No.
No.
You can go ahead and introduce them.
Sure, with me today. It's Ms. Jen Davenport. She's the current chair of the Inner Agency Council on Homelessness. Ms. Karen Gwen, she is the outgoing chair of the Inner Agency Council on Homelessness and the incoming chair of Chatham Savannah Authority for the Homeless. Ms. Stephanie Capel, the executive director of the Inner Agency Council on Homelessness, and Mr. Mike Traynor, the CEO of Union Mission.
All right, thank you very much.
And are you in support or opposing?
Chatham Savannah Authority for the Homeless is in support of the ordinance.
I have a question.
Let me go through this public comment, so. Kristy Krill?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Kristy Krill, and I'm the founder of the Dive Savannah. I've never got to talk to you as a group, but in one way, shape, or form, I've run into all of you in elevators and around town. I don't envy the decision you have to make today. It's very tough. But I would like to defer to the point made by Jen DeLong that there are many commonalities among the homeless population, but I think we can all agree that if you are experiencing homelessness, you fall in one of two categories. Either you are committing crime or you are not. And if you're out there, you are among the most vulnerable to be attacked and harmed first. I think the thing that a lot of people think, but are not saying, is that we're worried about the response to the ordinance. One side says it's going to go too far. Another side says it's not going to go far enough. And that's what I would just like to address just briefly, is that I have a unique perspective. I know a lot of you know who I am and what I do. It's rumored that we work one day a week, but if you scratch our surface, you'll find that for the last year, I've spent anywhere from 14 to 16, sometimes 18, hours a day working with our first responders, with Gateway, in the medical community. And the greatest thing I want to say that we've ever done is we've never come to you and asked for any money that gives us the perspective of the small business owner, the resident, and the visitor. I think if there was no consequence for telling the truth, if we all closed the door and said, you know, if you raise your hand and say we're failing, or if you're a small business owner and you say, I don't know if I can stay open another year if you guys don't intervene with this, if there was no consequence for that, you would find across the board that this community is weary. So from my perspective, I know that some of you have this via email, I wrote you some thoughts to consider, something from my perspective, from my experience in the field that's very compassionate. I think we're all looking for the same person that we want to love. Anybody that opposes current practices and a plan, I don't think that's them saying we want that job. I think it's us all saying.
Thank you. You're opposing this, or you?
I am for it, sir, wholeheartedly. Thank you.
All right. Is it Cajun Calvin? What was his first name? I'm sorry. It's Calvin.
Calum.
Calvin. All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Blakely. Yes, it's pronounced Calum Crampton. You may have heard it. I ran for the council in the last election. And I just wanted to take the opportunity, this homeless issue, which we talked about housing during the election, not so much the unhoused population. It's a topic that I have a lot of experience with. I have many years of interaction and using facilities and services in various cities and interacting with the people. Some of them have, as the prior speakers have denoted, have their own issues that, but there's also a lot of economic issues that the council's partly addressing. It's a complicated issue. As far as this ordinance, I don't think I fully understand the consequences to it. One of the issues that I'll be concerned about is, and I think many of the population, is the net effect on both people living in the homes and people that don't have homes. And both people are equal. We all talked about for everybody, for everyone. So those that don't have, own property have just as much rights as those who do have property. And I want the point, I want the issues that I've noticed over the last couple of decades. We used to not have panhandling to the extent that we do have. We did not have people in the medians, on the roadways, in the public right of ways affecting traffic. And I think that's a detriment to both visitors as well as the people living in the city. As they travel around, I think we have a right to not be panhandled and be approached by strangers as we move around. When you look at things, you, most of the land is privately owned. So when we're regulating public areas, which is mostly parks and public right of way, it becomes a question for the unhoused, well, where are they going to go? And we should have an answer for that as we make these changes to the ordinances. And I don't, and I'll conclude my comments. Thank you.
You oppose this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Pastor Matt?
Mayor Johnson, alderwomen and men, thank you for this time. My name is Pastor Matthew Henning. I'm pastor at Lutheran Church of the Ascension at 120 Bull Street in Savannah, Georgia. I'm also a resident of Savannah. I live at 506 East 34th Street. I speak against this motion, and I'm deeply concerned that many in our community think are homeless are homeless by choice. Lutheran Church of the Ascension serves over 12,000 meals a year through our 6E state ministry. Thousands of conversations have occurred between our volunteers, myself, and those who are suffering from homelessness. The myth that people are experiencing homelessness that choose to be homeless is completely false and wrong. Many are homeless because of complex and systematic issues that are throughout our society. Central, the central issue in our community is affordable housing, which is made worse by tourism and the growth in our economy. I urge you and those to focus on the underlying issues of homelessness and not simply make being homeless a crime. I have two examples of clients of our ministry, Mr. Michael Akins and Woodrow Davis, who were recently arrested. They face court hearings and criminal charges simply for sleeping in public places. Once a person has housing stability, there is a pathway toward restoration, both as economic contributors and positive contributors to society. The solution is housing first. It is not simply criminalizing homelessness. So I encourage you all to live by our motto, that all means all, and to be a light for those in our community who do not have a voice. those in our community who do not have a voice. There's too many pathways, too many obstacles for our homeless, and we don't need to create more obstacles by criminalizing their condition. So I would encourage you guys to first create resources for them to come to, especially housing resources and housing-first resources. And also, we need a social worker, and we will partner with the city on that.
Thank you, sir. Quinn Flood? Oh, he did? I'm fluid, I'm sorry. You spoke last time, right?
This is a different statement than yes?
No, no. We got you. You're on record, so, no, sir.
Are you sure?
I can't allow you to speak. No, sir.
I can't speak again?
No, sir.
Interesting.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
There was alderman Wildbry had a question, so I wanted, before I close the hearing.
I had a question because I'm kind of confused, and I'm not looking at this city ordinance with rose-colored glasses. I think we can beat this up. I have the, I'm supposed to take care of citizens, business owners, everybody that's affected by this, and I know that we're supposed to do something about this, but I'm kind of confused because the, Mr. Long, when she was up making her presentation, she gave an example of an 87-year-old person whose egress was blocked. And if I didn't know that she was on the homeless authority, she gave a reason why we should carry this ordinance out, and it just baffled me because she was supposed to be over the homeless authority. I was, if you give one for the citizens, I would have wanted to get an example from the people that she is charged to serve. And so by saying that, I'm just hopeful that we come up with some kind of ordinance that's fair and true to the people that we serve. We've talked about it. I know I can't beat this up any further, but I know from dealing and working with people and homeless, she admitted it, and we all know that clearly they have mental health issues. So if we're going to make sure that we vote on this city ordinance, we gotta make sure that if we take away, and we have police officers who are already stretched by capacity, now they're gonna be monitoring people who just want it exist as other people do. So my question is, Mr. Mayor, when we make this criminal, because it is, how have you worded, what are we gonna do about the storage of things that people have? I know we gotta take care, and we want to make sure that businesses continue to be viable and not be having a problem by the smell and the other things that makes somebody not want to go to that business. So I just want to make sure, sir, that we put some stuff in place that if they take these people's items, who's gonna be responsible for storing it? And who's gonna be responsible for offering services that the minister, who clearly said that he would work? So we gotta do a better beckoning and reasoning when we, the city, make these things and put them on a book that lasts forever and ever. So if we're going to approve this, then we sure better have someplace for people to store their items and be able to come back and get them. It is criminal by any exception, but again, I know we gotta take care, all means all. And so when we talk about all the, all, we gotta take care of the people less than, who don't have the tribes and the villages to make sure that they're taken care of. Thank you for your time again, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm in motion that we close it.
Move close of hearing.
Second.
And I would also like to say something.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. All in.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna give the same speech I gave last time, because it was quite long, and there was a lot of heartfelt information, but this is a very touchy subject. And I'm not gonna edify myself by talking about my law enforcement career or the homeless authority and all that. I will say that the absence of action is often worse sometimes in the action itself. And what we're finding here is step 15 of a 15-step plan or 20-step plan, which we've implemented, right? We've poured millions of dollars in the city of Savannah, millions of dollars in the city of Savannah, towards homeless eradication, towards trying to find a solution to homelessness. Now, we are not the folks that are the, we're not the model for homelessness or how to solve it here in the U.S., but I think we've done a fairly good job of managing resources and getting the folks, getting folks the help they need. The truth is, our police officers are already stretched because many of the calls that they are dealing with, and I know this because I hear it every day. Every day I hear, they're already stretched dealing with these individuals. Okay? So they're out there dealing with the mental, a person with the mental health crisis who happens to be ruthless. They're out dealing with somebody who's defecating in a public space, who happens to be homeless. Okay? These are the calls, these are the type of calls that these people deal with every single day. These folks are riddled with mental health issues, addiction issues, and some of them, not all of them, some of them are actually part of the criminal element. Okay? This ordinance here today is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Okay? This is just another tool. I don't see it as criminalizing homelessness. I have thought, this has kept me awake. People ask me, what keeps you awake? This has kept me awake for days and days and days. It's kept all of us up here awake for days and days. And although some of my best friends sit up here, we're gonna fundamentally disagree on a few things, and this is one of them, right? But I will tell you, we are looking at the most vulnerable people in Savannah. Not only do they have mental health issues, not only are they struggling with addiction, they do not have a place to lay their head at night, and where they do is often in a public spot. We have to weigh that out with the people that live, work, and play in this community, which also includes our folks that do not have roofs. Okay? I don't want this to be something that criminalizes people. I want this to be used as a place where we can offer them services. Okay? There's a great, and I'm glad Ms. Krill came up here and taught, Kristi Krill, she is, and she is one of the most amazing human beings I've ever met. If you've never got a chance to visit her at The Dive, they have, and I'm not kidding when I say this, hundreds of folks in need that come down there, get a meal. She's reunited families with their, people with their families, many of them which are homeless. Okay? Gateway is often a part of that conversation as it is with the homeless authority. Our goal in this community should be to find these resources. We're up here all day long finding resources for community centers, pools, roads, fixing potholes, and we're stuck here talking about an ordinance to try to help, what I feel is protect people, protecting the most vulnerable in our community. I have responded to calls where homeless folks are victims of crime, and that is often the case in many of these homeless camps. I deal with this every single day. Many of us in this room have dealt with that every single day. All right? In my conversations with the city manager, the chief of police, this is not a tool that's going to be used as punishment. This is not a tool that's going to be used to get people out of public places because we don't like seeing them there. This is a tool to help protect all people in Savannah. All right? This is a tool that's going to be helped, to be used to help folks get resources. It is a public safety and a public health issue. Public safety and public health issue. Think about that. If nobody in this room has ever set foot in a homeless camp, and I've had plenty in my district and plenty outside of my district where I've set foot, it is littered with needles, human waste, and all kinds of trash that you wouldn't believe. And these folks are living in that. They are living in unsanitary conditions in a public place, in a public park, in my district. They deserve better. Everybody deserves better.
Get them better. Don't put them in jail.
Sir?
Nobody's putting them in jail.
Sir?
Nobody is putting, nobody's putting any of these individuals in jail.
Sir? Sir, 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 sir. I'm gonna have you removed, sir. Officer, officer.
I will leave this person alone. Right, Mr. Mayor? You're violating this person's rights.
We're in the middle of a meeting, sir.
Keep them on you.
Thank you. All right, finish, sir.
So, we talk about resources, but we're allowing individuals to live on the street and allowing people, we are allowing this to happen, and we're sitting back and saying nothing is okay when something should be better. It is not criminalizing. It is not criminalizing. This is a tool used to help. And I've consulted my pastors, my churches, even some of my friends in this community who are adamantly against this. And this is a tough conversation. As you can see, it's a very emotional conversation for many. But we can make this work, and we can make this part of the solution. As I said, this is not, this is not a one-size-fits-all approach, but we can make this work in our favor, for our community, for all. All of us, and all means all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go on once? Go on twice?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remark that, for context, since we've all served together on city council, we have made those remarkable landmark investments in affordable housing, in housing-first policies, not just a pioneer on Georgia's coast, but really in the entire state of Georgia and the southeast. I would put as pound for pound, per capita, that we have made more investments in this space than nearly any city in the South. From the Veterans Village on to the American Rescue Plan Act, that we've continued building this strategy together, forming the Interagency Council on Homelessness, leading by the tip of the spear, even when others did not want us to, did not want us to place those investments, did not want us to spend those dollars there. I've learned in this job, sometimes you need to listen to the experts that are on the field, that are seeing it from their perspective. Our leaders at the Chatham-Savannah Area Authority for the Homeless are advocates that are living it every single day. They're asking us for options. They're asking us for a system that gives us tools for warnings and to help lift people up and give them options to connect them for services. And I encourage us not only to consider this today, but continuing making those investments so we can get to that functional zero point, so that we can be the first city in America that's solved it. Even if it's impossible, we need to keep trying. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna end the motion. You have something, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually gonna speak on behalf of the residents of Gwinnett Street. I had a conversation. We were actually talking about liquor license for another business, and the conversation came up, one of the residents said that it was an individual on his porch pleasuring himself when he was bringing his children out. And the individual was a homeless individual who they recognized from the community. And the conversation went on of what type of services do we offer in the city of Savannah? But the services that they were asking for don't work after 6:00 p.m. because the place that they wanted to take them, they didn't have anybody to come in to the facilities after 6:00 o'clock. And then they are charging some of our homeless to come into these places, so you can't ask somebody who don't have money to come in and sit down and, or take a bath or what have you. But then we say that we have mental health advocates that come out and help our ruthless, but we still have to make sure that they are out there doing these things. But we asking a lot of our homeless population, but we're failing them in many ways. Where are the drop-offs? Where are the places that we can take them to? I mean, we have wraparound services, but the services need to be a little more distinct than actually what they're serving and what they're doing and what time of night and where they have these centers and allowing people to come in. I mean, we have police that are out here doing the best job that they probably can do, but at the same time, we have, we have to educate our homeless population, and we have to educate them in a way to let them know that where they came from, and if they do want to go back where they came from, because the people don't realize that we got busloads of people being dropped off at our county line, or being dropped off at the foot of the bridge because they know we do have quote-unquote services in the city of Savannah, in our county. But what are we gonna do about that? There's so many different questions that are attached, and we ready to make a vote, but there are so many questions that are attached, we have to find a way to address all of these questions. But if we're gonna make a vote, I want to make sure that inside this vote conversation that all of these services that we are requiring people, or we say that we have, that we follow up on all of those services to make sure that they're really being enacted.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. In reference to what we are tasked to do here as the mayor and council of the city, and that is to take care of our citizens, and I just want to add my comments, and that is that we are policymakers here to make sure that we do the right thing as much as possible, the right thing for the betterment and the good of all. And we're talking about our unsheltered population. We all are clear, are mostly clear, and if you're not clear, there are things that happen with our unsheltered citizens. Some are good and some are not so good in their actions. We try very, very hard here in the city of Savannah to have cooling spaces, open up our public facilities, work with our nonprofits, do all these wonderful things, our businesses, my business, my husband and I business. We have folks coming out of the Salvation Army every day, coming onto our property, and we do not shut our nose away from them. We have a restaurant, and if they are hungry, my husband and I have them to do one or two things, pick up a piece of paper, put it in the trash. And we, my husband and I, we feed folks for free every day. So, you know, but there are some, there are some people who are unsheltered, they are not for the good of anybody around them. So it is this balance that we've got to make, and this is what we are trying to do as lawmakers up here in the city of Savannah. We've gotta take care of everybody, the good and the bad, and that is what we're getting ready to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman, in there.
Yes, sir, thank you. Quickly, I can see the pros and the cons of this ordinance. However, we do have some members who have championed this issue, and in talking to some of my colleagues, this is what I look like when I'm offering concessions and compromising because we have to do that. Because if someone is sleeping outside, they need help. And hopefully, we'll be helping more people get the help that they need, but in listening to you all who work closely with this issue, and I've been able to make a decision.
All right, so I'm gonna say this, and then we're gonna vote. And I'm struggling still with this for a couple of reasons. The first thing that comes to mind is I was looking at all of these cards, the speaker comment card of individuals who were speaking for or speaking against this issue. And I noticed all of them have an address. All have an address. The people we're talking about don't have an address. We haven't heard from them, the people who are affected. We go above and beyond to make sure we're communicative, to make sure that we are engaging people, and I'm not sure we really talk to those who are affected, and not kids. I hope to God that none of us ever has to spend a day being homeless, and I don't know what that feels like. But there are people in our community that do. And I've heard from so many people over time, and so, I mean, I kind of know what this is about, and then I kind of know what it's about. I've heard that homelessness is bad for tourism. I've heard that it's bad for business. I've heard that it's unsightly, and I heard they smell, and we don't want to see them, move them somewhere else. And I submit to you that if we are, and we pride ourselves on being a city of hospitality, then we are a city of hospitality for all, those who can afford a hotel room and those who sleep outside the hotel. But then they say, well, you know, they're doing criminal things. They're defecating, vomiting, urinating, pleasuring themselves. I see that during St. Patrick's Day weekend. I see that on any given weekend. And my answer to- And my answer to that is, those are criminal acts, and they should be prosecuted in a criminal We estimate that there's about 40 to 60 individuals who are repeatedly criminal in their actions. Yet I have not heard a significant plan in being able to address those individuals. We already know exactly who they are. And if they are committing criminal acts, then we treat them like criminals, to include removing them from our community. I see Pastor Matt, I see Cale Hall sitting in front. Cale came to me a couple of months ago, talking about his new ministry, and he wanted to engage homeless people. And I called it "leading by love," because he just walks out, and he meets people like Jesus, just meets them where they are. And he's had hundreds of interactions, from just a prayer, to just a smile, to just loving on folk. My concern with this is, where do you take them? Are we moving an issue from one place to another place? Does it become complaint-driven? Because I also see who's in this room, that they call enough, well, we're just gonna go ahead and move these folks out. And then to the point that Alderman Wilder-Bryan raised, where do you take their stuff? For these individuals, everything that they own in this world may be in a couple of plastic bags. And I have not seen, demonstrated to me, other than, we will take care and secure their stuff, a procedure, like they do when you get arrested at the jail, where we've taken your stuff, we're securing your stuff, here's a receipt for your stuff, so you can get your stuff back. Because I know, if you try to take my stuff, you're gonna have a fight on your hands. But once we have put our hands on people, we have incurred liability for them and for their stuff. And so I just want to ensure that for me, because I do agree that something does have to be done. I mean, in some cases, we just have issues that are persistent, and we have to try something. But on the other end, making sure that we are treating people with dignity, and with humanity, and with care, based on their individual need. Everyone homeless don't have mental health issues, but everyone homeless is not criminal either.
That's right.
And so, I already know where y'all are going on this, and y'all are welcome to go there. I would just ask, if you're going to approve this, that we approve it on a 90-day provision, that this comes back to this council, and if there are changes to be made, we make them. Because my concern is, is that the policy, the theoretical policy doesn't have the practicality that we need, because the city of Savannah is not in the homeless business. And so, things about chain of custody for personal belongings, for that officer, that, I mean, to put an officer in that position, to say, all right, well, when do they determine that enough is enough? How are we engaging our behavioral health unit? Maybe, you know, maybe an assessment might need to be done beforehand, but like Reverend Cale does, I want to make sure that we're leading in love, and we're leading in support, and we're leading in care. And removal is done only as a last resort. And because we know that that's only a short-term fix, what do we do when you're moving somebody again, and again, and again, and again, and again, and again? And those are questions that I have yet to have answered. So I thank all of those who are engaged in this work, because you see this every day, and you engage in it every day. I thank all of you who are very concerned, and I think we all, hopefully, are concerned about those who are ruthless, and members of council that hopefully have been struggling like I have, and hopefully are not taking this lightly. But I just think that we have to have a feedback loop, Mr. Manager, to be able to determine if this is working in the way that it's supposed to be. And if it does pass, and if I see that it is criminalizing, I'm gonna be the first to ask for it to be repealed, as the mayor of this city. So, have at it what you will.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, if another colleague would like.
I have one question before we do, Mr. Mayor. In the city ordinance, sir, subsection F, it says, "Where personal property is stored in violation of subsection above the Savannah Police Department may deem the property to be abandoned and may confiscate it. No warning is required prior to the confiscation."
Right.
That is against the Constitution. We can't just take people's property and then say, if they don't have an opportunity to come get it, you're gonna throw it away. And so if we could modify that to do that, because I am in agreement that we need to do something, I'm just not in agreement with discarding everything that a person has to spout all over again from the bottom. If we can do something about that, and I wanted to offer a motion.
If you go in my garage right now, there is stuff in there that most of y'all would consider trash. You just would. But to me, I can't get rid of it, because it means something to me. And so again, to that point, Mr. Manager, why would we put a police officer in that position to determine that someone's belongings is not worth or worthless? Again, I think for me, that is the concern. If we are creating storage facilities, and we have storage bins, and we have, again, a way that we can create a chain of custody, but I don't want the city to become the evaluator of someone's life possession. I just don't think that's our role.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could, I have a tremendous amount of experience in this.
Sure you do.
And it's a very difficult topic, especially when we talk about encampment engagement and removals, and the identifying of personal belongings versus waste and wreckage. I'll refer you to a memo that I sent to council on May 2nd regarding an encampment policy, a city manager directive about a joint encampment policy between the city and the county, and how we were working to address, to ensure that, one, we provided the proper notice to residents of encampments, and that we had the proper protocols in place that we can to be able to determine what is personal belonging, and what are those items that Alderman Purte discussed, which aid into the acute public health concern that exists with encampments, and they do exist with encampments. One thing you said, Mayor, that I do have to disagree with slightly, is you said that we're not in the homelessness business. We are very much in the homelessness business.
We fund the homelessness business.
Homelessness is an issue that I hear about every day from my seat, and I know that you do as well. And my background, first job in public service was helping to shape and implement the federal response to homelessness under President Obama and his administration. I went on to work in the District of Columbia to do the same thing, and worked on a tremendous amount of issues. And the pastor who spoke earlier is absolutely right. Housing first is the approach. You have to lead with compassion, you have to do those things. And I'm proud to say that Savannah does, and I would refer council back to the strategic plan that the Interagency Council on Homelessness produced. I would refer council back to some of the materials that we've produced on how much you've invested in those solutions. And I know that this issue is really, it's personal, it's humanity, it regards our basic rights, and so, excuse me if I'm speaking more as a sanitized technocrat, in that you have to have a few tools in the tool belt in order to ensure that the public spaces and the systems that you've built in order to provide support for people are able to operate in the way that they need to operate. And every day, I hear from our partners who are working on this issue, that, you know, that this kind of support would be useful for their work. And believe me, they are engaged in helping people, they are not engaged in hurting people.
Yes.
I've also said that this ordinance is not a cure-all for this issue. This may address or give a tool for a front door, or for an action that we can take for a public health and public safety, acute public health and public safety, but it doesn't address the back door. If in the event SPD officer does have to arrest an individual for breaking the law, or because of an acute public safety issue, that this ordinance would help that officer be able to address that situation. The likelihood of that person being right back in the same spot only hours later is very, very high. So we have to be clear-eyed about what this ordinance is, and what this ordinance is not. I think, taken together with the true Housing First comprehensive approaches to trying to meet people where they are, and build a system that can support people out of homelessness to reach their full human potential, is what you have to measure, something that can be understandably viewed as something that's penal and unfair. I've recommended adoption of this, because I think it's a tool that we need. We have to use it judiciously, and we have to be smart and strategic about it, and we have to be compassionate about it. But we do have those policies, not only in SPD, in terms of the possession of property, but also in our encampment policy that talks about how we are going to store and keep property and make that available for people where encampments need to be addressed. I want to refer council back to those items, and just to provide that statement.
Alderman Shabazz.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Shabazz.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask my colleague Alderman Purte, he wants to make the motion.
Alderman Purte.
I have a comment.
Alderman Purte.
Mr. Mayor, this is tough for all of us. Many of us up here are ministers, many of us up here are brothers and sisters in Christ and of each other, and all public servants, but I will say, if you have questions about the services that need, that you have questions about any services that are provided, two resources in this very room today, Jen DeLonge and Kristy Krill.
Thank you.
Please get with the both of them. If you in doubt, if you doubt the system, if you doubt the resources, there are resources 24/7, and they're there for folks that need it. With that being said, I move to approve item number 18, as read on the agenda.
Second.
I would ask for an alternate motion to have a 90-day review, date, sir, on September the 11th.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there a second?
Second. A second with, how are we going to monitor, who's going to be monitoring those 90 days to see if it's working or not?
I mean, we would essentially be approving this ordinance, and the city manager will bring us back a review.
Is that a substitute motion, Mayor Johnson?
It was, and a second.
Can I ask this?
One moment. City manager, well, we'll say from September the 11th, we'll go back to the 25th, city manager will bring us back a review, with any recommended changes.
It's good monitoring.
September 25th.
That would give, that would give a 90-day opportunity for you to, you and the partners, to evaluate, and suggest to us any changes. If it's working in the way that it was intended to work, and we have no issues, then you come back with the recommendation that there are no changes to be made. I think that we have to have some ability to be able to review what we have approved.
Mr. Mayor?
I ask a quick question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Melder, would you be monitoring this with or without that addition of that amendment? Would you monitor this either with the amendment or without the amendment?
Either. I'd be monitoring it.
Mr. Massey, can this ordinance be repealed at any point in time?
Yes, it can be.
If you established it, you could abolish it.
Okay, that's all I have.
What I'm asking for is for us to keep this front of mind, and simply for, in the approval of this, for the city manager to come back to us on September 25th with a report about the effectiveness of this. It does not change the fact that it's been approved by council, but it does make sure that we keep this front of mind.
What, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Oh, we will, yes.
Do we need to vote? What happens on city council the majority of the time? I've been doing this long enough to make this statement. What happens on this council? We come to city council meetings, and those of us who have issues of importance to ourselves, or to our businesses, or to our life, you know, those things stay in front of us. But then there are some items that comes to our front, that's on our agenda, that we do the work up here, we pass them, we don't pass them, and then they just go away, nobody thinks about them, they're just gone. So what I am hearing, and I agree with the mayor, is all this does, it brings this back in front of us to have public discussion again, to where it does not get lost in the weeds. This is all that's, there's nothing different. The city manager, the clerk just said, colleagues, it's no different than moving forward without the 90 days, or moving forward with the 90 days. So I'm asking us to not allow this, because this is important to all the citizens, or the majority of the citizens who are listening, who are in this room. Citizens who are not in this room, this room is still packed. Normally at 4:00, it's almost empty, but it's still packed in here. So therefore, people are interested in this. So let us, and I'm asking colleagues, let us have the monitoring tool, so it can come back to us, in front of us, for another discussion, and then if it's working, we can move forward. It's just 90 days.
That's not what I'm asking for. On the 25th, in a workshop, the city manager reports about this. It's not bringing it back on the agenda. I'm asking for him to brief council about the effectiveness of this ordinance, this program.
Do we have to vote again on it, at that point in time?
No, no, it would not be, I'm not asking for it.
Okay.
I'm not, one second. I'm not asking for it to be placed on the agenda. I'm asking that the city manager, within this 90-day period, reviews it, and reports back to us in workshop. Is it working? Is it not? Are there changes that he recommends? I don't want this to get lost.
That's even better. But you just said you would repeal it.
I said I would repeal it if it wasn't working. But this, I'm asking, well, we will, when it's time to vote. I'm asking the city manager to be able to report to council. We cannot let this get away from us. And so, again, I'm not asking for it to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
Although I could place it on the agenda, I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for it to be in workshop, and I'm just, in this motion, asking the city manager to report back to council in workshop on the 25th, saying, giving an evaluation of this ordinance over the 90 days it's been enacted. That is all I'm asking.
I was just saying, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was just looking for that word, evaluation. You just want an evaluation of the process in 90 days. I'll go for that.
And I'm not asking for us to evaluate. I'm asking for him to evaluate it. And again, are there recommendations to us? There might be, because again, we're not, this is something we've not done before. So if there are changes, and again, the mayor, I mean, the city manager is a member of our Interagency Council on Homelessness, if there are ICH recommendations, or Homeless Authority recommendations, then you would report that back to us. But I just want to make sure that we maintain our eyes on that ball.
Quickly, Mr. Mayor, quickly. Okay, well, Mr. Manager?
Yes, go ahead.
Has anyone actually had a conversation with the sheriff to see if he's on board? Because if we have our officers take individuals out here to the jail, and he rejects them, then what? then what?
I do know, I was in a meeting where this topic was discussed with many partners, including the sheriff and the district attorney. I think in some cases, depending on the specifics, you know, then we've seen that the sheriff and the sheriff's office would book someone depending on the crime they committed, but that also goes back to my statement about this doesn't address the back door, right? So you might be able to remove a situation or be able to impact or shape a situation as it happened because of this ordinance, but it doesn't compel anyone into any kind of a treatment program, it doesn't compel anybody into a housing program, and if the sheriff's office decides that, you know, they're not going to book somebody into the jail, then that person, like I said a few minutes ago, all likelihood is going to be back on the street in a matter of hours. We do know that there are many people in our community who are experiencing homelessness that when they are picked up, you know, they do hope for a couple of days, and that was the sheriff's comments in the meeting that I was in, but.
But I think that we have to have a definite plan because between our residents, our partners, and the decision we make today, we have to have a definitive plan that's going to show them we know what we're doing.
We do have a definitive plan and this council adopted it a few months ago, the Interagency Council on Homelessness Strategic Plan, and it talks about the comprehensive system, where our gaps in that system are, what we need to be able to address it, not just for the city of Savannah, but for the whole. I also want to remind council that Chatham County adopted a very similar ordinance two weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago. And so, they have this, you know, this is an ordinance that they adopted as well or very similar to it, and I think that it behooves us to be able to make sure that we're working in concert with our partners, that we have the same tools and that we're using the tools in the same way because, like many things, homelessness does not really abide by jurisdictional boundaries, right? I mean, homelessness goes across the street just like, just like we do every day. So I want to be clear that this is, for all the things that we've done about this issue, this is a small piece of it. This isn't the plan, this isn't the leading, you know, point of the strategy on how we address homelessness. This is tucked away in a small toolkit about what we have to address acute public safety and acute public health needs as they exist in public space. So I would refer you really to the Interagency Council on Homelessness Strategic Plan, which this council adopted, which the county adopted, which the Interagency Council on Homelessness adopted, and it really talks about the comprehensiveness of the system that we have to be able to manage.
Aldo Men Purte.
Okay, so I think there's a lot of discussion, what is, what isn't, and, you know, I think there's an opportunity to look at this and evaluate it one way or the other, okay? And those of us in favor of it can make sure this thing is strengthened right and it's working the right way it's intended to work, okay? So, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with us being able to make sure this thing's working. So with that being said, I'll amend my motion to include that we have an evaluation in 90 days from the city manager's office to determine the strengths and weaknesses and how we can improve said ordinance.
Second.
Well, not necessarily, I'm removing my amendment.
Amendment.
So they're second to his motion?
I second his motion with a statement. I actually ran the property room at the Chatham County Sheriff's Department and it is not an easy job. And so my recommendation would be, we can move on this because we have to do something about it and it is going to protect people. It will allow us to know what the pulse is, where we are and where we need to be, but my recommendation would be that it not be housed with, unless it's criminal, that it be housed somewhere other than where the property room for police officers who already taxed. Y'all don't want to walk by it, but you want police officers who are already stressed to go through this property that they have to take with a chain of custody and give it to somebody. You know, that's the bone of contention that I have. Are we going to do this and you saying that it's not criminal to do this? We did approve this, but I didn't see a process of how we're going to keep this property where it's going to be and how they're going to be. Because even at the sheriff's department, if you didn't pick it up in 30 days, there's a time on it, but it is a horrible thing to keep those smells with people who are working there. And we do have citizens who are working in the property room and you want us to put that stuff in the property room where they have to go through and navigate, that's not even fair for them to. And so if we're going to do this and we're going to move forward, I want you to assure in those 90 days that you do have a concrete process of how they're going to get their material back. They may not even come back. We need to put a time on it, but I don't think, and Gunther's gone, but Ramsey, he's a police officer, and Audrey Williams, and I can tell you that to go through that property, you have to put on five or six gloves, you know, and it's a horrible thing. And you don't want it on the street, so it should be, it should not be enclosed where our people are going to be working and trying to get rid of it. That would be my recommendation, sir.
That will definitely be a part of the evaluation.
Thank you so much, sir.
Let me clarify Aldo Men Purte's motion and Aldo and Bell. So the motion, as I understand it, is that we are approving this and we're asking you to report back to us an evaluation of this on September the 25th, which is the second meeting in September, along with any recommendations you may have.
Yes, sir.
I'm good with that. That's it.
I second his amendment.
Then properly moved to second it, Aldo in favor and the case by saying aye.
I'm going to make sure we could.
It's unanimous.
It's unanimous?
Yes.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Aldo Men Purte.
All right, thank you. All right.
And then they leave. They don't have to do better.
Let's go to the purchasing items, items 19 through 27.
21, please.
21.
Oh, 21 for me, too.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
One second, one second. Anybody else?
Hold on a moment, Mr. Mayor, there was one over there that I wanted to question you about.
Thank y'all for that.
Yeah.
I'm going to pull 24. I'm just pulling 24 as I'm feeling a little petty right now.
I know, this is, I want to see, I want to see number 24. I want to see. Where's the rendering?
I think that's just a little too excessive.
I think we can make some boxes for them.
All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no more pullouts, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items number 19, 20, 22, 23, 25, 26, 27.
Second.
Properly moved this.
21, please.
We pulled it already.
Right, pulled. They're second.
Second.
And properly moved to second that we approve items number 19, which is authorized city manager to execute a contract for one waste handler dozer with Yancey Brothers, company amount of $629,832. Item number 20, authorized city manager execute a contract for two bucket trucks from Fouts Brothers Incorporated DBA Smurda Truck, Caravasa lifting amount of $351,000. Item number 22, authorized city manager to execute a contract for one pothole patcher truck with Reynolds Warren Equipment Company, care of Leboy Incorporated, amount of $328,302. Item number 24, authorized city manager execute contract renewal for Zemitsu Fiber Services in the amount not to exceed $500,000. Item number 25, authorized city manager execute a contract for electric motor repair with Carbone Technology Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $278,980. Item number 26, authorized city manager execute a contract for repair with Goforth Williamson Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $10575. Item number 27, authorized city manager to execute a contract for materials for new lift station in Forest Main Phase Two from Ferguson Waterworks in the amount of $2,796,912. You heard the motion, all in favor and the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 21, authorized city manager to execute a contract for the economic and land use study for the Savannah Civic Center with Robert Charles Lesser Company in amount not to exceed $150,000. The cell will focus on the Civic Center's site redevelopment, including market and financial feasibility analysis, development strategies, cost-benefit modeling, and parking needs all in alignment with priorities identified, resolution identified, adopted by city council. This is Aldo and Bell and Mayor. I think a couple of people pulled that up, Mr. Mayor.
We took a pause for the cause.
21?
Oh, yes, I did pull 21. I'm just concerned that after I read the summary, it stated that there were three, Mr. City Manager, three people that applied, but I only see one that, there were three that turned in the RFPs, but there are only two here. What happened to the third?
We're talking about the economic and land use study?
Economic and land use study?
For the civic center?
21.
For number 21.
Give me one moment to get to, am I right?
Not to exceed $150,000.
Yes, ma'am.
While he's looking, I'm going to move on to item number 24, authorized city manager execute a contract for furniture package for the clerk of council's office with JSI Furniture Patterson Pope and KI Walls, care of Mason Incorporated, amount of $100,000. I pulled this one. I just think our city manager deserves better furniture. He deserves the best, so I move for approval.
Second, second, second.
All in favor and the case by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry, city clerk, I'm sorry.
What happens to the furniture that's in his office?
Oh, I don't think you want to be on that right now.
Donated to somebody?
Yeah, we have a way we dispose of surplus of property.
We're going to get some shag carpeting. Plush. Mr. Massey, you eating orange over there?
Right now, I think it's been every kind of soil and dust on that, yeah.
Aldo woman, so I believe that in terms of the.
Or construction.
To the question about the economic and land use study?
Yes.
For the city legacy redevelopment plan.
I just want to know who was the third?
Yeah, I believe that that must have been a non-responsive and I will get you the information on that. There were two invited, three received and two went forward to the interview stage, so I'm assuming that the third was non-responsive, but.
Non-responsive.
But I will confirm that because it's not on the write-up, but that's usually what that means.
Okay. Also, I see where Robert Charles Lesser Company out of Maryland bid $150,000 and the KB Advisory Group out of Atlanta did $139,500. What was the deciding factor for Robert Lesser's company to get it as opposed to the KB Advisory Group?
So the RFPs, and I can provide in follow-up, and it's also included in your package, RFPs are different than bids. RFPs look at the totality of the proposal and not just the unit cost like a bid would. So if we put out something for bid, we're going to choose the lowest bidder, that's by law. When we do a request for proposals, we're looking at more than just the cost, we're looking at a number of qualifications and you can see the purchasing notes in your package. We score on proposers' qualifications and experience, including support capabilities, 30 points are awarded for that. The approach to the project or to the RFP, that's 30 points, references and past performance is worth 20 points. Fees are worth 10 points. Local and DBE participation goals are worth 10 points for a total of 100 points. And in the case of this evaluation, the Robert Charles Lesser Company.
I don't see that in here, Mr. City Manager. I must be overlooking it, but I don't see that breakdown.
I can share this with you, but I'll read it.
Might be.
In that proposal, the Robert Charles Lesser Company scored an 87.1 and the KB Advisory Group scored an 84 on the proposal. So I'll have Daphne provide that to you, but it's in your package.
It does say this event had a recommended 20% DBE goal of which half, 10%, was met by a local DBE contractor. Would that contractor be listed?
Not in the, not in the contract. Our relationship is with the prime.
And not the subcontract. Aldo woman and Mayor.
Aldo and Mayor, you had a question about this?
It's not in here.
I isolated it because I didn't want to support it, not that I want to speak to it, I just didn't want to vote for it. Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
I do.
Sir.
It's not in here. Mr. City Manager, in reference to us hopefully approving your authorization to execute this contract for economic and land use study, my question to you is, what economic value?
Not in here, Zenas.
It's not in none of them. I think they may not have had it when they put the books together.
What economic value and impact will this study do or give to the citizens of Savannah?
So this is again in follow-up to the council's decision on the future of the Civic Center site, and city council made a decision that, and had some key factors into it. One, that we wanted to retain and restore the Johnny Mercer Theater, the ballroom, the meeting rooms, and to look at the opportunity to add some type of expo or large meeting space that could, that could host the type of community events that were once hosted in the old MLK arena. Also stated that we would retain the name Martin Luther King Jr. for the entire site. It talked about how we wanted to restore the rest of the parcel, the seven acres, as much as we could to the original town plan by restoring the old street grids and then looking for the opportunities for what kind of land use and development would happen on those restored parcels. This study looks into all of the questions that we might have on what should go on those restored parcels. How should we think about approaching, redeveloping those parcels? How do we look at the underlying zoning for the neighborhood? How do we understand the character area as it is in the National Historic District? So what are the land use opportunities there as it relates to all of those factors and more? And then what is the economic benefit or detriment of any one of those decisions? And so it's going to be able to provide us and provide council more data and insights on how best to make the decision for how we develop the parcels that are going to be restored as a part of this work.
Fantastic. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Before you do that, can I, yeah, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, also Mr. Manager, once we decide, once we vote on this, when the process gets started, could you please, please be very transparent with us as these decisions come in and when these questions come, we have an opportunity to take it to the community and really find out what they want because to get to this point right now, you see how it would have turned into when we started talking about removal of the Civic Center, but we really need to talk about the parking study and what we're dealing with right now when we have events at the end market and also events at the Civic Center and there is a parking problem and we need to talk about how many people really do want to have housing back and what the grid would look like in that downtown region. Now, we want to be able to be in that conversation and not have it made and then we have a halt in the process because we wasn't put in the conversation.
Yes, absolutely, and I didn't mention parking, but parking is absolutely a part of this study. The, so these are all of the, this is all gathering information so that you can make a decision and a big part of our process going forward is ongoing community engagement and that's another partnership that we're bringing forward as well so that we can have continued community engagement and input as a part of all this work. This helps us get on the path of just kind of studying and know what we're going to be talking about when we bring things to community, pre-decisional, pre-recommendations, really just trying to gather information so that you can make the best decision and we can help inform our residents about why we're making those decisions.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Mr. City Manager, I can remember a couple of months ago, we talked about this and Sateel, what was his role? Because I thought this is what he was supposed to be, well, that company was supposed to be doing.
So Sateel and Sateel is the city's urban design contractor. We have them. We have them on annual contract, and they work with us on a number of projects, including the Civic Atlantic City redevelopment plan that council passed resolution on. They, I, I know, I'll take an example of what they, what they are doing. I know that I sent an email out for some work that we were doing with some consultants about the programming of the theater itself, the users of the ballroom and the meeting spaces. And I sent an email, and I know we did a lot of outreach because we wanted you specifically, council, to provide input to those, to those consultants. That consultant group is working under Sotille and Sotille. So they are taking on parts of this project. Parts of this project, we want to be able to contract for as well and make sure that we're controlling and this land use and economic feasibility study is really a, a product for the city and, and one that we needed to be able to procure for in a public manner rather than have, have contract or subcontract this workout. We want, we wanted to have an RFP for it. We wanted to be able to, 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 to do that in a public procurement. Does that make sense?
Yes. Things that make you say, hmm.
Okay. I think public procurement is always a good way to go.
Mr. Mayor? Can it be things to get us a motion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for this agenda item to be approved as it is written in the agenda.
Second.
Probably moved in second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion passes eight-one. And we moved, we did, we took care of our clerk.
Shag carpet.
Good, all right. Under the board appointments, item number twenty-eight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to make a motion.
For approval of Alderwoman Carolyn Bell's nomination of Tara Scott Brown to serve on the Traffic Calming Committee, replacing Marion Singleton. Yes.
I was just gonna make the motion.
Yeah, I was just reading into the...
Okay, I move that, um, we appoint this body, appoint Tara Scott Brown to serve on the Traffic Calming Committee.
Second motion.
Probably moved in second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Let the record note, our first reading of our resolution adopting our Savannah GPS plan. Under agreements, we could take these all together if you like. Items number thirty through thirty-three.
Number thirty-two, please, and number thirty-three.
Okay, then we'll take items number thirty and thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
All right. You, you want to pull thirty-one?
Wait a minute, no, that's not the one, thirty.
Okay, well, we'll just take them individually.
Yes.
Item number thirty, approval of memorandum of understanding with the Friends of Forsyth Conservancy and the City of Savannah, which outlines mutually beneficial roles and responsibilities to promote and maintain the preservation of historic integrity and open access of Forsyth Park. I believe City Manager has written us ad nauseam regarding this. Where, is the motion?
Yes, I, I wanted to, you had something, Jay?
You've got a question, I'm happy to answer.
Yes, I have a question first about, what type of group is the Friends of Forsyth Conservancy, Inc.?
Um, I believe that they are a nonprofit organization, but they're really just a group of stakeholders who want to invest their money in the, in Forsyth Park and projects that we would have to do. I can, I can also have Joe Sheerouse, who's been really kind of leading the collaboration effort between all stakeholders, come up and answer one question about it.
You answered, you answered it, actually. And kudos to Forsyth Conservancy, Inc. But I wanted to pull this because I want us to look at it. Because what we're doing here, we're giving a certain, not full, we're getting, giving a certain authority to a nonprofit organization to have some kind of purview over this city asset.
No, ma'am.
No.
So they, they have no authority or purview over the asset. This is an MOU that establishes a relationship by which this group wants to donate money to the City of Savannah for projects that the City of Savannah would, would be doing or approved to do in our public park, Forsyth Park. So this, this, this MOU gives no authority to this group over the public space, gives them no decision-making authority over which projects get programmed. It simply establishes a relationship and really is a benefit...
They want to raise money.
The MOU is a benefit for them to be able to say, hey, we have this MOU for the city. If you give us money because you love the park, we can help donate this money to the city to, to do the things that we want to see done, that the city wants to see done in the park. So this gives, this gives no preferential treatment. This gives no authority or decision-making to, to any other entity than to the City of Savannah for the City of Savannah asset. It is simply a, a, a document that establishes a relationship that says, this group is gonna raise money to donate it to the city so that the city can use that money to make improvements to Forsyth Park. It's a, it's really, it, it really is a, a kind of an affinity organization that loves the park, and they want to spend their own money to help us improve it.
There is something in the media recently, hadn't come before us yet, about the second playground and changing that into some type of meeting space. Is that another organization?
Um, yes. So that is the Savannah Rotary Club and the Metro Rotary Club together have a joint fundraising campaign where they want to make an improvement in the park to an improvement that the city, by way of its own plans, actually had plans for. You'll, you may recall that the Rotary Club also paid for the accessible playground that's on the, on Forsyth Park today. And that, that, that playground is going to, of course, stay there. It's a very popular park. But we, we, and I think this is a testament to our civic community is, you know, we, there are a lot of things that we're able to do in this community because our community wants to provide money to it. And I think civic organizations like the Rotary Club, I think it's wonderful that instead of, you know, putting their money, you know, into other places, they want to invest it in a public space and improving a public space. And I think that's commendable. But it is a different project.
Well, well, good, because the comment I want to make is that I think it's a, a good model when you've got not-for-profit organizations wanting to, to maintain or help run these assets so we can leverage them with other dollars. It's a good thing, but I wanted to bring it to the attention of everyone because this is a practice that we have. Because I know some other instances, we have this practice, like at the Roundhouse and in those areas. So in looking at assets around the city, whether it's on the, whichever district, it doesn't matter, I think our public could look at this example where we could do more with our assets because of these MOUs and MOAs. And I wanted to stop here and look at this because this, this is a model, but I don't want us to use it sparingly.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And you're, you're a member of Rotary as well, sir, right?
I'm a mem, yes, sir, I'm a member of Savannah Rotary.
Which is why we support his membership because those types of things bring dividends back to the city. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move for the approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Friends of Forsyth Conservancy as read.
Second. Probably moved in second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Item number thirty-two, request approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County and the Savannah Economic Development Authority for the Vision 2033 Strategic Initiative.
Uh, Mayor Johnson, we already discussed that one. And I am vehemently against it, so somebody else can make the motion.
Which one, you reading thirty-three?
Number thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Mr. Mayor?
Reclaim Old West Broad Street.
No, he, he said something else. He said, he said thirty-two, but he read thirty-three.
No, I said, I'm looking at thirty-two.
Right.
Thirty-two was pulled.
I pulled thirty-two.
Okay, we, we took them all individually, by default. I have them circled like we, all right. Let me go back to thirty-one. Thank you. Approval of a water and sewer agreement with Savannah Harbor Owner LLC for Savannah Harbor. Development consisting of 242 single-family homes on Hudson Island on the President Street Plant Service Area.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move for the approval of a water and sewer agreement as read.
Second.
Probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Now thirty-two, back to Vision 2033. Their motion.
Mr. Mayor?
No, I, I pulled thirty-three. I pulled thirty-three.
I'm on thirty-two.
Right, you on thirty-two.
That's the MLK, overpass.
The overpass, yes.
No, this is thirty-two. Thirty-two is Vision...
Thirty-two is the overpass, the reclaim Old West Broad Street.
I have, thirty-two is, am I reading this right? Thirty-two is Vision 2033?
You're correct.
No, not on ours.
You may have an older agenda.
You may have an older one, it's thirty-two.
Okay, so...
So I have Vision, I have thirty-two, and whatever number it is, this is for Chatham County and the City of Savannah and Cedar for Vision 2033.
Okay, I pulled that one. So what happened with, on my paperwork, it says thirty-two, second memorandum of agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Savannah to proceed with preliminary engineering commitments.
Okay, see, these are inverted, so, Mr. Manager...
Yes, sir, understood.
We have a number four par again, but anyway. All right, so let's go back. So which, which one is the...
I-16 is thirty.
So then thirty, so we'll go thirty-two then.
Yes.
We'll say is the memorandum of agreement between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Savannah to proceed with preliminary engineering commitments related to I-16 and Montgomery Street and MLK Junior Boulevard ramp and overpass removal. Now, go ahead.
No, the, I was saying that we already discussed it.
Right.
I'm totally against it, so somebody else can make the motion.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Second. Probably moved in seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Motion passes seven to two. Now, we're going back to thirty-three.
Now to thirty-three, correct.
Which was thirty-two on mine, which is recruit, request approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County and the Savannah Economic Development Authority for the Vision 2033 Strategic Initiative. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval.
Second.
I have a...
Probably moved in seconded, yes, ma'am.
A statement I want to make in reference to this.
Yes, ma'am.
This is for Vision 2033.
Yes.
And the constituents that put me in this seat know that I was vehemently against Vision 2033. And I got a statement that I'm gonna read because this thing kept me up all night. It bothered me. While some see growth and opportunity, others see eviction notices, shuttered small businesses, and a city they no longer recognize. Vision 2033 promises prosperity, but it risks becoming a future built on the backs and the displacement of the very people who shaped Savannah's soul. Let's be clear, this vision wasn't designed for everyone. And many of us, working families, seniors, renters, public housing residents, legacy black-owned businesses are paying the cost. We've seen it before. Neighborhoods once full of families, history and culture erased in the name of redevelopment. Rising property taxes quietly push seniors from homes they've owned for decades. Public housing is revitalized into something new, shiny, and expensive, with no guarantee of return for the residents who were uprooted. Renters face constant hikes while wages stagnate, and black-owned businesses, some operating for generations, are being priced out of the commercial corridors they helped build. Meanwhile, public dollars are being spent to attract tourists, luxury apartments, and high-tech industries. We are told these investments will trickle down, but for many of us, there is no trickle, only a tide that threatens to wash us out. Now, my question is this. Has 2033 been revamped? Has it been changed into the same one that we talked about back in 2019, 2020? And who are the ones that's on the board?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. So Vision 2033 is not drafted. This would be a, this IGA establishes a partnership between the City of Savannah, Chatham County, and the Economic Development Authority to draft a plan and to understand the different things going on in our county, in our community, the different plans, like our strategic plan, like the homelessness strategic plan, the GDOTS Coastal Empire Traffic Study, and to understand how all of those things are working together. I think that, to kind of get to the, I think, the heart of the statement that you made is, I think it behooves the city if the county and the Economic Development Authority and others are, are moving down this road. If we're not at the table, then we'll certainly not be able to ensure that the, that the folks and the stakeholders and the corridors that we care about are always going to be represented in the ways that we would represent it. So I think part of my recommendation for entering into this IGA and being a part of this planning effort is to ensure that city council's vision, the, the people in the communities and the businesses in the corridors that we care about and want to make sure that we're lifting up along with other folks have that attention during this planning effort. So that's, that's really part of my recommendation to make sure that we...
So you're saying that the 2033 plan that was created in 2019, this has nothing to do with it? It is totally different.
Yes, ma'am.
It's worded the same way?
Uh-uh, it hasn't been drafted.
I don't think it's worded the same way.
No, 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 the title, the title, it says 2033.
I understand 2033, and of course, that, that, that's a, that's a year because that will be our tricentennial.
That's two hundred years.
So I think a lot of people have used 2033, but this plan itself has not been drafted. This IGA actually establishes the, the advisory group that would set out to, to, to kind of make that plan or set that mission.
So you all haven't done anything? You haven't picked the people to be on the board or anything?
Well, this IGA establishes...
Who can?
The, the board, the, some of the board members, which would include the mayor, the county chairman. It includes somebody that this city council appoints, somebody that the county appoints. It puts the city manager in an ex officio role. It puts the city manager in an ex officio role, it puts the county manager in an ex officio role. It has the chair of the Savannah Area Chamber of Commerce, an appointment by the Savannah Airport Commission, the chair of the Savannah Economic Development Authority as well. And then it also states that additional board appointments from contributions to the plan along with the appointment process within the bylaws that would be established to date, so.
So that's four additional appointments?
Potentially, yes.
It's eleven member board.
Mm-hmm, eleven, okay. All right, well, as long as this is not the 2033 plan that was created in 2019 that did not have anything to do with incorporating African-Americans in that particular plan?
There have been a variety of plans that people, I mean, where there is no vision, the people perish. And so you can't bemoan people for setting out to create some function of their vision. This has been something I've been supportive of because we need a vision for this region that is not just the City of Savannah, because we have county partners, we have economic development partners. And we need to work in concert. The number 2033 is our three-hundredth anniversary, so that number sticks out in people's heads. I have seen tricentennial plans, three hundred, all of these different things that lead, lead to that. I, I really want to caution council, because what you read basically was what it was going to be before it even is. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And the only way we're going to ensure that those that we represent, the people that you spoke of, we become their representatives, so we could say, well.
Black people, African-Americans, you can say that.
Well, I'm the mayor for the entire city, so.
Right, well, I'm just saying.
For, for black people, African-Americans, for everybody.
As we can see in our city right now, that there are certain groups that have, and then there are certain groups that don't have.
I will tell you, well, when you look at this council, they, we have, so all I'm saying is this.
When you look in the community, you don't see.
All I'm saying is this.
What's up here does not reflect what's going on out there.
But, but you, but you, but you, you kind of spit on the plan.
I said what I said.
Well, I said it, and I'm saying what I'm saying.
Okay.
You spit on the plan before the plan was even constructed. And all I'm saying to council is, is that there is a necessity.
Sounded exactly like.
I believe I have the floor, ma'am. There is a need for council. Now, we can sit back and cry about those who are planning, but 2033 is coming. And we could play around with, with, when we want to, but the fact is, we'll be saying the same thing in 2033 because we chose not to be at the table in 2025.
Is the MPC going to be involved in this?
No, they're not, they're not a partner in it.
They're the planning professionals for this area, why aren't they involved in it?
Because, because they're not a funding partner, we might, they, well, I think we're using them, but they're not, they're not, they're not the convener of this.
That's a problem, that's a problem.
Actually, it's the city that counts.
If they're professional planners, then shouldn't they be?
Professional planners.
We're paying them to plan.
Alderman, pull up both.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and really, too, so many of these events are centered around our tricentennial, which is, I think, an outstanding milestone for our community. It's going to be a big celebration, and we have profound regional challenges that over time, if you look at the trajectory, we start with the Housing Savannah Study, which was the impetus behind Georgia Tech getting involved and then getting that figure down to a very specific granular number that we can all tackle the housing crisis together. And then, of course, we have a massive transportation crisis as well. It, it does take our largest partners to be able to pull in the same direction. And I understand the concerns about the Planning Commission as well, those are going to come in the form of land use and activation of those bigger, broader ideals. So really, to, I see this more as a visionary document that's going to be able to enable this, to look at processes, procedures, to get cross-coordination with not just the nine municipalities in Chatham County, but our regional partners, state partners as well, and how we're addressing these profound challenges.
Thank you for lifting that. There's a vision, there's a strategies, and then there are the tactics. And so from all of that, we will have partners and MPC will have to be involved in, in the strategy and the tactic, this is just a vision.
And they're asking us to give a million dollars towards this?
Yes. We're a part of it. So anyway, is there a motion?
I have a.
Yes.
So move.
Is there a second?
All the woman Lanier had questions.
One second, there's a second.
Second.
Second, all the woman Lanier.
But anyway, yes, Mr. Mel, the work that was done by the CNU, the Congress of New Urbanism, and the legacy projects that they did surrounding those federal opportunity zones, that particular 2033 plan, that Vision 2033, it would be one of the plans considered in the, in the plan that they plan to construct?
I, I, I think that that would be, it's really up to the, there's, there's been nothing, nothing decided about what's going to be, you know, part of the background and what's going to be, you know, established. I think it's, this is, this is kind of kicking it off and saying, here's the, here's how we're going to kind of look at this, and these are the the political leaders and the community leaders that we want to say, hey, what's out there, what do we know? So I, I couldn't comment one way, and I'm really not familiar with the 2033 plan that you're referencing, the one that was before my time.
MPC has a copy of it.
Somebody did.
So, so I really can't speak to the specifics of that.
Let me say this.
I do know about some of the Congress New Urbanism reports, like the South Side Revitalization Plan that we talked about today. There's the East Side Plan, and so, so, you know, those are things that we're, you know, the city is working on.
Well, let me say this, the CNU work that established those two plans you just referenced, we didn't get an opportunity to do a legacy plan with the CNU on the west side. We were in the room, but was not offered a seat at the table. I'm talking neighborhood presidents and advocates for the west side who, who was vehemently trying very, very hard to also represent that opportunity zone on the west side and to come up with a legacy plan. We didn't get a chance to do that. We didn't get a chance to put many of our desires in the new zoo when we were working with the old zoo and the new zoo planning, and we were told that we would revisit those things. Within the six months when we were looking at both of those plans, we told, we were told we could revisit those and, and afterward, and that never happened. Now, just here recently, we, we were doing some work on the ADUs and the, and the due places, and that was a part of that conversation back then. I'm saying this to say that my experience and experience of the people in the community is that when we participate in these exercises, it's almost impossible to get the vision of these people that I represent in these plans. You often hear me saying, people often hear me say, there's a clash of two visions. Because when I look at the vision that the residents have and the people that I've been working with for these decades, that vision looked totally different from the master plan and these visions that, that we see. And, and what has happened, Mr. Mel, is that those visions in those plans that come forth, they have served to not benefit the people in these areas, who've grown a little leery of these planning processes. And I met with some of the people who are proponents of this plan in these agencies that are partners. Did get a chance to do that, and they did say that they would be referencing and utilizing and building upon that CNU work that, that was said in the conversations. So we still get that clash. So what do we say about this plan? And I asked the question in these meetings, how do we make sure that the desires of the people like the people I represent, who vision doesn't look like this vision? How do we ensure that their vision get actualized? How do we ensure that these people do not relinquish their vision for a vision and a master plan that would wipe out these communities and continue to gentrify these communities? Those, those are some concerns, because this is one issue here, like Alderman Pertis said, that keep you up at night. This is the one that have kept me up at night with a whole lot of time. Because we need to be looking at the, the basic root conditions in, in design for certain outcomes. Now, I need to say this, in looking at the way this is constructed, I have a problem with professional planners not being at the primary level, at the top level. We really look like we're replacing the MPC.
No.
And let me finish, please, look like we're replacing them, and we're spending a whole lot of money and putting together a bunch of developers and business entity and government entities to create our master plan. Now, next year, we're supposed to revisit the master plan based on the timing. And, and how would this work assist the work that we're going to do next year? And would have that master plan tweak and look different from what these business people and these, these economic developers? And again, I think it's critical that professional planners, people who live, breathe, and do this at the table because we're making a plan. We're making a master plan, we're spending a lot, a lot of money doing this, and, and the, the top planners of the city are not at the table at this board level where they should be. I think we should have the chair of the MPC and an appointee, just like we have with city, county, and SEDA with this. Because when we look at who's making our plan, our plan for the future is being made by economic developers and government officials and not planners. But they're at another level that's, that's way down a couple of rungs on the ladder when we're making a plan for this entire county.
Understood. I, I do want to make sure that we're clarifying two different things. I hear a lot of concerns about land use, and I think you used the term master plan. We have a comprehensive plan, which is, in many ways, a land use document and a thing like the Future Land Use Map. And that comprehensive plan is done by MPC, it has been done by MPC, and, and it's something that we have to do by state law at certain annual annables. The, the Vision 2033 initiative, which is different from the 2033 plan that you're referencing, how I understand that is that this is about vision setting for our region and for our county. And this isn't replacing a comprehensive plan, it isn't replacing zoning, all of those things. And to, to your point, your question about how do we make sure that, you know, the constituents that you care about, or this council cares about, or the city council about, like, this isn't, you got to make sure that those voices and that input are embedded in every plan that we do. So this strategic initiative, 2033 Vision Plan, whatever the name of it is, it isn't like Lord of the Rings, one ring to rule them all. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't view it that way, like, that we're creating, you know, some plan that we all have to be subordinate to. But I do think that it's a really, on paper, a very good opportunity to say, hey, we're going to get our community leaders and our political leaders who are setting visions in the City of Savannah, setting visions for Chatham County, setting visions for workforce and economic development, to, to, to come together and to start understanding what the vision for our combined region is, and understanding what is the city doing, what's the county doing, are the economic development targets that our economic development partners going after? Are they in line with our values? Or are they not in line with our values? Are there certain things that we want to see them bring in, or certain things that we want to have? So I think that those, to me, that's the real value and opportunity in a plan like this, is to understand what are the challenges that we're going to have to face as a region, whether it's housing, whether it's transportation, whether it's workforce development, whether it's equity, whether it's poverty reduction, and this is really trying to set out a vision. It doesn't replace the land use plans or the comprehensive plan or the zoning plans. It doesn't replace at all anything that the Metropolitan Planning Commission would do. And certainly, we're going to have to engage professional planners throughout this initiative as we, as we look through the process. But I don't want us, I, what I want to urge against is conflating that this seems like a replacement to MPC. It absolutely isn't a replacement to MPC. MPC does the work of, of the city, on the city's behalf, on the city's behalf, to review zoning changes, to review variance requests. They make recommendations in certain instances to city council make the decision. They have the authority to make decisions in other areas, and we contract with them and have done that to do the comprehensive plan, which is, again, something that we're required to do from the state. So two different things, but I would say, to your question, how do we ensure that the stakeholders that we care about are represented? Is, one, make sure that you're at the table, and two, make sure that those values are represented in the decisions that, that those groups make, and that we think about that for every planning process we do, not just our strategic plan, not just this Vision 2033, and not just our comprehensive plan, but all of them.
Okay, quickly, Mr. Mayor, please, strategic plan, what we're doing here with the city with our new strategic plan, that's great. That's a great start. I have some confidence in us moving forward if we use this process. Are we going to have that type of guarantee with this process that it's going to be resident-driven, citizen-based? Because if we engage in this process, and like I shared with some of the people that I met with, asset-based community development bottoms up. So is, is this another top-down approach that, that we've always seen? Because right now, if we're moving into more of a community benefit strategic approach and more participatory-type management, then are we going to use this type of process, or how could we be assured that, that the, the citizens are going to drive this?
I, I think it's, this is different. It's a vision, and it's not a plan. And in this case, in, in lifting this, we have economic partners. I mean, ideally, when this came forth, I really thought the school board should have been at the table as well, because education is so central to what we do. So whereas in, in the city, where we control, I think it should have been absolutely resident-driven. I think when you look at stakeholders in this regional view of vision for our area, I think, you know, it's not necessarily resident-driven. I think it's stakeholder-driven, and the stakeholders are different depending on who it is.
Mr. Mayor, earlier, we took your recommendation and said we would come back in thirty days and review. So could we get something like that in place, like?
Absolutely.
We might have, I, I know we've had a lot of citizens asking about area plans, area plans, so they could all fit into this master plan. And we haven't done any work on that. We did a lot of work on that in the early 2000s, and that was a great opportunity for communities and neighborhoods to create their neighborhood plans. And that has a lot of value right now, but we have so many areas that did not get an opportunity to do that. So if we start this, this work, and we make it participatory, then, at what point, like the ninety days over here, could we come back and review? How much time you think it would take to get some type of momentum going so we are know how we could gauge or some kind of judgment on this?
Because, well, because I'm a, a voting member on it, what I'll commit to you is, once we're, I mean, even beyond, I mean, whenever there is significant timelines, I mean, I mean, I think we owe it to, to council to come back and make sure you're informed of that.
Last thing, we are creating a new Vision 2033, and it's not. I'm asking, I'm asking.
Yes.
I'm reading. I'm reading. Go ahead, all the women.
But that's, what's the question?
This is a different 2033 and not the Vision 2033 that we got left out of before.
Right, the one that I think you're talking about was, was, I think it was Savannah Development Renewal Authority did a plan, so what are you reading?
Okay, I am reading the Request Approval to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement with Chatham County and the Savannah Economic Development Authority, SEDA, for the Vision 2033 Strategic Initiative. The twenty thirty, and this is the description, this is why I said what I said. The description says, "The 2033 Strategic Initiative is a joint effort by Chatham County, the Savannah Economic Development Authority, and community partners to fund and develop a comprehensive growth and community plan in anticipation of Savannah's 300th anniversary. Vision 2033 will address key areas, including housing, education, healthcare, land use, policy, resilience, storm water management, environmental protection, zoning and density, infrastructure, transportation, and economic development. The plan was introduced at a city council workshop on October 2022."
Yes.
Hold on, the 2033 Strategic Initiative has a $3 million budget, funded by $1 million each from Chatham County and the City of Savannah, $250,000 from the Savannah Economic Development Authority, and $750,000 from private and community partners. The funds will support hiring a consultant to bill on existing plans, engage the community, develop a goal-oriented strategy, and support early implementation efforts. Didn't you say the plan doesn't exist?
The plan, the plan does not exist.
The collaboration of all these plans he was mentioning, the tricentennial plan, all of these other plans, I mean.
Okay.
Let's, y'all vote.
I'm done.
If y'all don't want to do it, fine, we won't do it.
Just trying to get some questions answered, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, but, you know, at, at some point, we just got to make a decision, so is there a motion?
Lastly, but not least, there is no reason why we can't call the shots. We are one-third, and all due respect, we are one-third of the funding mechanism. A million from the city, a million from the county, $250,000 from SEDA, and $750,000 to make the third million from the business sector. So just as I heard all the woman Lanier say earlier, just as we place some parameters around the urban encampment policy, we can place some parameters around this since we are bringing one-third of the dollars to the table.
Mr. Mayor.
And the mayor is a voting member of the group.
Mr. Mayor.
They're not a part, other cities?
They won't be in the plan, we won't plan for those areas.
I did not, I, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, according to the.
One moment, please.
So again, I think it's, there's a, there's a difference in elevation that we're talking about here. I think that the concerns are more about land use planning and comprehensive plan, zoning, small area plans, where I think the, the intention of this partnership is more about understanding the vision for how we're meeting out all of the challenges in our county and region. Certainly, the land use planning and the normal processes for land use planning, small area plans, how the different municipalities in the county do their planning, they don't use MPC, right? They do their own zoning and planning. That will all continue, but again, this is more about, we have significant, as it's been said, there, there are significant challenges. There's all of this. There's all of this work happening to try to address all of these challenges. How are we coordinating in the best ways to, to make sure that what we're all working on fits together and benefits the community in the way that we want to benefit? That's how I kind of view this work, is more of a coordinating entity for, for how we're thinking about these problems than some plan that's going to direct everything. Again, you know, the, the plan won't, you know, the city council's not going to be subordinate to any plan that is produced out of this.
So to Alderman Bell's point, I entertain a motion, but I want, there's one?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say something for you.
One moment, let's, let's move on, please.
I need to say something, though.
Let's make contingent that we do ask the school board, because they are so critical. I mean, when you talk about who is included, you have to talk about who is excluded. And so how do we talk about education and the education professionals are not engaged? So I don't know if that's a part of a motion or just something we just handle ourselves, you and I, in terms of bringing those, those funds to the table that, to Alderman Bell's point, if we're calling shots, we want to call, we want the school board at the table. What do you think?
Well, I, I would say that this is about approving an IGA.
Right, right.
So if you want to make a, if you want to, if you want to make an edit to the IGA and then approve that, and then, but we'd have to send that back to the county for them to approve, and CETA would have to approve it as well.
Yeah, that's okay.
And I mean, you can do that.
Well, I would say, I mean, I just think, you know, if we're going to talk about, I mean, how do you do it, talk about education and people are not there? And then if it's something wrong, then let them say they don't want the school board a part of it. So who, who made the motion? Ms. Palumbo, would you consider that amendment?
Yes, sir.
I have some discussion item on this, but we vote on it.
Is, is there, all right, who made the second?
No, I didn't before.
Okay, you accept it?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
The motion is that we approve it, but we, as a part of ours, we would add, add that we would inquire about the school board being a part of the, the agreement.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, and Mr. City Manager, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's already written in this IGA or in this agreement proposal, that there are certain persons who will be a part of the steering committee or the steering persons of, of this work. So it's already there of, of the entities, of, of the city being involved. It's already there. We are not left out of the discussion. We are part of the written agreement. And what you all just, what you all are just talking about now and adding the school board, if that goes through, then the school board representation will also be at the table. But it's already there. If you go through the.
With funding?
Oh, yeah, you're talking about funding, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If you come, if you come into the table, well, that's, that's what they're talking about. I'm just talking, I am talking about the, the board that makes up the decision, because it was stated, why can't we say something if we're not at the table? It's already written in the documentation that we're at the table.
How, how do we send it back and get that down?
Well, basically, we, the city manager will execute that. I, I think, yeah, the other part about that is that when you talk things like workforce, I mean, how do you talk about workforce without talking about schools, public schools, public education? You know, so, yeah, I mean, so.
If this is.
How come CETA is only giving $250,000? Why aren't they giving a?
Well, I don't think they're at the level of, of, of size that the city and county is.
And I think they raised the other 750.
And they're raising the other, yeah, they have 750, and they're raising, they're raising another 750. It's 250, and they're raising another 750.
So I think that the way to move forward is two ways. One, I think that the IGA as currently written allows for four, more board members, and that, Mayor, you could decide that, you know, you and the, you with this initiative, you're going to talk to the other key voting board members and say that at least one of those other board members is going to be the school board, if they are able to help support the plan. Or otherwise, I think you add a line into the IGA and we send it back. I think the, the easier way perhaps would be to work within the confines of the IGA as written and ensure and express those, you know, work to get school board participation. Because they, they, you know, so we don't know that they would participate, but, or otherwise, you make an amendment to amend the IGA.
Right.
To include specifically the school board, and then we make that amendment and send it back to the county.
I, I think the problem is if you amended to include them and we had not asked them, you know, so, but I think, you know, I would be disappointed if they chose not to be a part of this.
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll ask, and we'll report back to council if we need to make any changes. All right?
So that's coming back?
Yes, well, we'll, we'll approve it, but then if there's any changes, we'll come back to you and, and say what they said. All right? All in favor of the case by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Oppose.
All right, motion passes, now, eight, one. Oh, I'm sorry, seven, one, and one recusal from Alderman Pertie. You come on back now.
Mm-hmm.
All right, y'all don't want me out. All right, I have number 34.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
We got another item?
We got two more.
We was finished.
This one is real short. Move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle the claim of Jeremy Williams for $65,000.
So move.
Then property move the second, and then we authorize the city attorney, authorize city's attorney's office to settle the claim of Jermaine Williams.
For $65,000. You heard the motion, all in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, and?
This is it, last one. Last one.
Prove of a major subdivision, Sweetwater Station Phase 12, and a 12 phase of subdivision named Sweetwater, Alderman District 6.
Yes.
Alderman District 6.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, move for approval on this final phase of Sweetwater.
Second.
Want to talk about it?
No talk.
No, second.
Probably move the second, all in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Any, any comments?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
We'll start on this end, we'll come all the way down.
No, I have mine.
Just for the record, most of you probably know already, but let's remember the family. Let's remember the family of Heath Lloyd, his father passed.
No. Oh, so sorry to hear that.
Central email.
Who's that, who's that? I didn't see it. Heath Lloyd's father passed.
Services of tomorrow in South Carolina.
I want to say a special thank you, thank you, thank you, to Pastor Charles Roberson and Kingdom Life Church. A young lady purchased a home, and the first home she purchased, it flooded out, so she had to move to a brand-new home, and that home burnt down in O'Geecheton. But Pastor Charles Roberson and his congregation saw the live that we did, and they donated that young lady $500. LaShawna Williams is her name. So I want to thank them wholeheartedly for reaching out and helping that young lady. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pertie, Alderman Palumbo.
Yes, sir.
Alderman, any of y'all, there you go. Well, just one, two quick things. One is, Juneteenth is next week, and so there are activities happening all over the community. I wanted to congratulate Alderman Carol Bell. She was honored as an influencer woman last week, so congratulations to you for that. And, I don't know, yes, ma'am?
Oh, for the Juneteenth celebration, there's going to be a darty, which is called a day party, 30 and older at Say Hey All White. We asking everybody to come out, enjoy yourself like grown folks do at Say Hey on Bull Street. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, anything?
Mr. Mayor.
No, sir.
Attorney, anything? Mr. Clerk, anything? No?
Mr. Mayor, I have some things, I have some things. Mr. Mayor, you forgot to talk about Grayson Stadium next week.
Play ball on Monday, play ball, Major League Baseball, Savannah Bananas, the City of Savannah, and the U.S. Conference of Mountains.
Hold on, I didn't finish. GMA.
Next week, we have GMA in town, the Georgia Municipal Association, our friends and colleagues from Georgia's 537 cities will be here. All weekend, we'll be playing host.
Yeah, and we want to remind people that Reverend DeHenry Thurman is running for bishop. He has a, an event of dinner tomorrow. If you're interested, it's at 11 o'clock. Please contact Sharon Hampton. Her number is 912-660-6629, and that's for Bishop DeHenry Thurman. He is running for the bishop of AME here.
At St. Paul's.
We'll be in the sixth district tomorrow.
No.
Tomorrow, right?
Mr. Manager.
It's supposed to be tomorrow?
Is it the, the GPS?
No.
No, we don't.
Oh, oh my gosh, I almost forgot, yes. The, the Wilshire Playground Park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Han Largo. 2:30 tomorrow. Please join us, the very first park that Wilshire has ever had.
Ever had.
Yes, yes, yes. Town Hall Meeting, Third District, July 1st, 6 o'clock at the park, 425 Penn Avenue.
We are Savannah Strong.
Yo, let's go, city attorney.